Okay, good afternoon. We will call the special board meeting for Wednesday, May 29th, 2024 to order at 3:35 PM. Roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Director Bankus will be joining us momentarily.
Director Carey?
Director Carey will be joining us later in the special meeting.
Director Haley?
Director Haley will be joining us remotely.
Director Jorgensen?
I am here.
Director Malpakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
We have a quorum, and I expect all board directors to be joining us at some point today, either during executive session or special meeting. With that, please join me as we observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda, Director Ott, I'm going to come to you. Can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda with an amendment by moving Agenda Item D5, Policy BG, Board Policy Process, from Consent to Action?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education adopts the agenda as presented, except that Consent Item D5, Policy BG, Board Policy Process, is moved from the Consent Agenda and placed on the Action Agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And the first was made by Director Ott, and under the Board operating manual, any director can move an item from Consent to Action. For all, please.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I's have it. The agenda has been adopted with the one amendment, moving Agenda Item D5, Policy BG, from Consent to Action. We do have executive session for roughly 120 minutes, two hours. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to move into executive session?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss negotiations per CRS 2464024E, Particular Matter Superintendent's Contract and Personnel, per CRS 2464024F, which is Particular Matter Superintendent Evaluation, Employee Compensation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I's have it. We will move into executive session and join back here for the rest of the special meeting roughly at 5:30 PM. Thank you. Okay, good evening. Let's get started. So, at the beginning of the meeting, the board adopted the agenda with modification, with the amendment to move Policy BG from Consent to Action. We have returned from executive session, and there is no need to modify the agenda any further. Before we start the special meeting, in the interest of full transparency and aligning with the board priorities of proactive communication, I do want to provide the community with the following update. The board just met in executive session for two hours this afternoon. The primary topic of the discussion was Superintendent Gall's end-of-the-year evaluation. As you are all aware, the board's one employee is the superintendent, and the board collectively takes that responsibility seriously and has consistently stressed the importance of evaluating the superintendent objectively, based on his performance and the body of work throughout the year. Accountability is the key to everything that we do, and it starts with this evaluation and feedback process to the superintendent from the board. And through this process, we are promoting a district-wide culture of accountability, a culture of high expectations, no excuses, and putting students and their outcomes as the number-one priority. And any employee evaluation is an opportunity to celebrate accomplishments and focus on areas of growth. And in that spirit, the comprehensive superintendent's evaluation with the rubric will highlight strengths and opportunities for growth and future development. And I do want to commend and thank my fellow board members for taking the time and going through this process diligently, first with the completion of the rubric and feedback, then the productive conversation in executive session, all of which will be captured in the final evaluation report and presented to the superintendent by the end of June. Superintendent Gall, on behalf of the board, I do want to thank you for your hard work, innovative ideas that you have brought forth, and commitment to our students, staff, and district. We have made significant strides as a district in improving student outcomes, prioritizing student success, while ensuring we are also investing in our staff. Two years ago, two years back, when you took over as the superintendent, the clear focus was excellence, excellence in education, excellence in operations, excellence in service. Excellence was our stated destination, and even though we have more work to do, we are well on that journey to excellence. I want to take this opportunity and publicly acknowledge that the board is appreciative of your leadership, your vision, and focus on the mission and board priorities. Thank you. That is my update to the community. Moving on. Pledge of Allegiance. We have Lyman Kaiser and anybody, any other veteran that is in the room, leading us in the pledge of allegiance today. Chris Odom, please join us. David, are you a veteran? Okay, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our world.
So, for those of you who did not see the beginning of the meeting, we have five board members joining us in person on the board dais. Director Haley and Director Bankus are joining us remotely today. Public comments. Do we have any public comments signed up today? We do not have any public comments. Moving on, I don't have to read all the protocol for public comments then. Consent items. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopts all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are approval of May 8th, 2024, regular meeting minutes, D3, attendance policy series, and D4, policies AC, GBA, A, JB, and JBB, nondiscrimination, harassment, and equal opportunity.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And just as a reminder, D5, which was Policy BG, was moved from Consent to Action at Director Ott's request. And there was also concern expressed by a community member about repealing Policy JHD, which is currently under Consent Item, without the corresponding revision change in Policy JF and JF-E. Those policies have not been revised yet, but if the board is comfortable with charging the superintendent in revising those policy and the policy that's being repealed, JFT pulled into the language in JF and JFE, and we can task the superintendent to do that and bring it to the board at a future date. Are we good with that collectively, as a board? Director Ott, you had something to say?
Thank you, yes. And Director Nelson and I were discussing this off the dice, and it's under D3 that this, under the attendance policies, that this would be repealed. I think that along with, so we talked about JF and a Casby version of that, we do have our own version of JF. There's also the JKD, JKE regulation, which addresses this. So I think all of that together should be addressed and brought back to the board. And I think the question for us also is, do we need it before August or not? So, thank you.
Okay. I think that's a conversation for Dr. X, and we can take it outside this board meeting, and I'll correspond with Dr. X and see if JKD, JKE is already on the agenda for this evening as non-action, and then it's coming as action two weeks later on June 12th. If JF can be brought in that time schedule, that's something I can talk outside this with Superintendent Gall and Dr. X and see if that can come back. Okay? Yeah, sounds good. With that, roll call, please, on the consent items. Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Director Bankus?
Director Carey?
Here.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Director Haley?
Are they in your?
Let's go back. Director Bankus? Can you hear us? Okay. Director Haley, you look, there you go.
I can hear you.
Okay. What is your vote? Aye or no?
What are we voting on? I didn't hear that.
Consent items, the consent items that are on the agenda.
Oh, aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I's have it, and Director Bankus did not respond for this. Moving on to the action item on the agenda, the first item is Resolution 2024-44, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges for 2425, 2024, 2025. Director Carey, can you please make the motion for action item E1?
I move that the Board of Education approves Resolution 2024-44, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges for SY 2024-2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This item came to the board as non-action at the May 8th regular meeting, and the board actually moved this item to consent at that date, but there have been a few minor changes to the student fees since then, so I pulled it out of consent into action, so the board and the community can be informed about the changes. Superintendent Gall?
Yeah, Ms. Ottmer, come forward and summarize the changes.
Good evening, board. In hearing your feedback when we brought this as a non-action item, we went through and kept the fees at the 50% reduction, as we spoke about, but for fines, we reinstated those to the same costs as they were in the 2324 school year, in the elementary, the middle, the high school, and the district-level fees. We also fixed the PSAT SAT fee noted by Director Ott in the non-action item, and we removed the PET shirt fee. So, basic summary is all the fines are the same as they were in 2324. That includes things like a lost lanyard, a lost student ID, that's going to be the same charge, but if it's a fee, that is reduced to 50% of what it was this past year.
And I think if I remember right, the yearbook cost was also the full fee source.
Correct.
Yep. It's not at 50%.
Correct.
The yearbook charge. Okay. Any comments from the board or feedback at this point, questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please, Melissa.
Director Bankus? Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The I's have it. The student fees, fines, and charges as presented at this meeting have been approved by the board. Moving to the next item on the agenda, this is the Resolution 2024, 2024-45, Approval of Agreement Between the Board of Education and the Colorado Springs Education Association. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item E2?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education approves the agreement between the Board of Education and the Colorado Springs Education Association, Resolution 2024-45.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gall, I'll turn it over to you.
Dr. Comfort?
Good evening, board. Dr. Schott, CSEA president, will be joining me as well. We just wanted to take a few moments to speak about the negotiation process, as well as highlight some of the outcomes of the agreement. As the board knows, the CSEA membership did ratify what was presented. Just a few highlights, starting first with compensation, a 1% salary increase to the schedule. We also made an adjustment, and this has been a challenge for our district in the past, now in Lane 1, where it typically has said bachelor's degree, it will now say CTE, CDE certified, so we will have an opportunity for CTE teachers on our salary schedule now. That's been a consistent challenge for us. Teachers will also be receiving steps when possible, 6.5% non-recurring compensation, paid in two installments. Academic credits will be funded. Obviously, we will continue to cover para and insurance benefits, and then we will continue the 1425-year service increments. We also agreed, after we get our budget passed, we're going to do an audit on the 1425 process and see if there's an opportunity to extend that amount to match some of the other agreed-upon parts of the negotiation process this year. So that's where we are with compensation. As a reminder to the board, we also reached agreement to support our hardest-to-fill schools in terms of an in-district staffing stabilization grant, and so that will provide additional compensation, as well as additional days and supports to schools who meet certain criteria. It will be a two-year grant that schools will be participating in. There's lots of detail in that, obviously, but I think that highlights the largest part of that. Also, to notify the board, there were a number of MOUs that were existing that have been brought into the agreement. And then what I just spoke to in terms of the staffing shortage plan, we'll also have an MOU that we will create for specific schools. Dr. Schott?
So, a couple of other things, they might seem small, but here they are. There was additional language describing that personal devices don't have to be used for completing your job functions. This was shown up in playground duty and weekend phone calls and so on. So, that was clarified as not mandatory. There will be reimbursement of credits, the credit costs, rather, when aligned with U-Dip and academic master plan goals. That will be a thing filtered through joint council to identify particulars there. So, that will move people along while also meeting district desires for particular training. And the last thing I would note is that special service providers have, are not under TACTA and state law, but we moved an MOU, this is one of the MOUs, moved that into the agreement that identifies continuing employment as a right that mirrors the certified staff. So, when you've been identified as an effective teacher for three years, that kind of thing, which is an important thing to our special service providers.
Thank you, Dr. Schott. Personally, there were several employee negotiations, days, the sessions that you guys had, I was in the audience in the back, listening to the conversation. I appreciate the productive conversation that took place at least the meetings that I witnessed, and I was privy to some. And I do have some closing thoughts before that. I'll go to the board. Have you any feedback? Director Ott?
Thank you. Melissa, you scrolled past this. It was the stipends, and there's a stipend for unified sports. And my understanding of unified sports was that all sports would probably be covered that, but I was asked a question about, or the comment was, Special Olympics are not necessarily covered if we do a Special Olympics basketball. I don't know if that was Special Olympics or unified, per se. And so my question would be, are all of our unified sports, or what we might understand as the unified sports for our special education and regular ed students, does each one have a stipend? You passed it, it just, sorry, just a little further down. It'll be unread. Sorry, Melissa. So, I hope that made sense. Are there Special Olympics programs that do not receive a stipend, that are different than our unified programs?
Yeah, you got it, Melissa, right there in the module. Yep.
Director?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. Dr. Comfort?
Okay. I will have to follow up on the Special Olympics question specifically. It is different. I don't know if we provide a stipend for that. I can definitely follow up. One clarification is unified programs, because we are expanding those and bringing those into the middle school. So I do think the vision is to, I mean, no pun intended, continue to make it more accessible, but I will absolutely follow up on the Special Olympics question and send a response.
Okay, yes. And then if it's not, I think we need to look at that again, whether it's this year or next year, just for that common understanding. Thank you.
Can I add something?
Good.
Unified programs includes theater and so on as well. It's not just sports.
Thank you. My understanding specifically was that there was maybe the unified, the definition of the unified sports program was one thing, and then there were other sports programs that might not have received that stipend. But I understand what you're saying about the unified theater and things like that that we're seeing in our course material coming up.
Yeah, Director Ott, I will definitely seek clarification and send that answer.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Ott. Any other feedback? Director Jorgensen?
On page 2 of 11 here, it's Article 3, Section F, Number 4, about the association president may also appoint members to the other district committees as desired. Could you please give us some context to that? I don't know if I personally remember that in any of our meeting updates.
Yeah, thank you, Director Jorgensen.
Bullet point forward. Yeah, scroll down.
Go ahead, Dr. Comfort.
So this is an example of an MOU that was brought in. There's existing language on participation in interview committees, and so this language has gone through our legal review and is basically an extension of what was already existing and what was agreed upon in an MOU.
Okay, I wouldn't assign this, when I read this, I wouldn't think about the interviewing piece, because I read that somewhere else. I would think of this about more of moving into the DAC or the PAC or a budget subcommittee. That's how I would read this, is this more, like you mentioned, more towards the interviewing piece?
This is the hiring committee, not committee as the board thinks. And so this was a negotiated conversation, negotiated piece from a grievance that was filed last year over the hiring of positions and CSEA not having had proper notification of those. And so then we came to an MOU, and then an MOU was signed only a couple of weeks before the IBB process, but then the process of MOUs is then they move into the master agreement.
Okay. I read that, and I understand that as like number two there, but number four on this point, that first sentence, when I read that, to other district committees as desired, that to me just seems a little not aligned with what you mentioned, Mr. Gall, but more just, hey, we want, you know, two more members to help out on this committee, and they just notify the chair. That's how I'm reading this, and I just wanted to have some further clarity on that.
You're exactly right. That was existing language. The interview piece was the MOU, and it dealt with actually drawing back some of the district requirements on constant notifications, so now there's going to be access to the notification board. It is now the CSEA president's responsibility to keep track of what's there and identify what interview committees, CSEA teachers want to participate in. But the other part, number four, as you note here, was existing language that simply was not eliminated.
Okay.
So it was, it was part of a single larger paragraph, so it wasn't separated as number four. If you look in the old agreement, it was all one paragraph with two parts.
Okay.
It's now separated, that's why it looks different, but the language is unchanged.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. That's what I needed to hear. Thanks.
Are you good, Director Jorgensen? That's fine, yeah. Okay. Director Nelson?
So, is it possible to just add in district hiring committees? Can we add language at this point, or is it too late to make edits?
No, I think, what Joe's telling you is that this is existing language. We took care of the hiring piece. Four is as it reads. And what's the example of the committee you sent me an email on just last week on high school graduation requirements? Per the master agreement, CSEA is authorized to be able to appoint members to committees in that regard. If the board had not liked that, we would have then sought to have brought that forward in IBB.
Understood. I'm just saying that we're noticing there's a little bit of vagueness, and is it possible to add one word at this point in time to bring clarity? But it sounds like that's not possible.
So the way I understand it, that hiring committee is addressed in bullet point two? Okay.
I understand. It's too late.
Yeah, the bullet point four is existing language, which we would have had to, my understanding is, go through the IBB process to change the language.
Yeah.
All right. I guess just the other point I would like to ask is that in the future, when we're in the process of MOUs, just that the board be involved in reviewing that language, especially if it's going to automatically roll into the master agreement, and that's an agreement between the board? I'll admit that some of this language was, it seemed new to me. I know that there was an update to the board on IBB, and I found it, that it was presented towards the end of the IBB sessions, and it, I'll just own that it slipped by me, that I did not realize that that was there. But, so it sounds like maybe it was happening around the same timing of the IBB process, and maybe that's a little bit of why, but I'm just recognizing there's a little bit of a hole where the district is working through MOUs, but then now it's being presented to the board to adopt into the master agreement, and I personally, this slipped by me on some of it. Just a request in the future for us to keep in mind that when we're going through MOUs, the board be privy to that language as it's happening.
Yeah, Superintendent Gall?
Yeah, I just, I think we'll need clarity from the board. That's not been previous practice. When grievances come forward, I don't have the grievance language in front of me, but oftentimes, we will meet, Deb Menkens is there, and then we talk about, and then in this particular case, we agree that we thought that we could settle this with some language change. I understand the master agreement is agreement between the board and CSEA, but MOUs have always just been designed and negotiated in those grievance settings or through joint council in other ways where we can problem solve. Director, Dr. Schott, do you have more clarity in how that process has worked?
A little. You're right, in many cases there, but I would add a couple of things. MOUs are often, they're ad hoc treatments of whatever might be before us. So it could be anything like, we want to increase summer bridge pay to attract more teachers. That's another thing. So, not necessarily grievance, keeping in mind that a grievance is simply an attempt to clarify the process around something. The issue was worked through, Deb Menkens and I, in fact, spent a lot of time just sitting down trying to find out how to do this. Ultimately, and maybe you have input on this too, ultimately, it was a question of a couple of mistakes that happened, as it was described to me, where CSEA wasn't alerted to some high-level hiring processes over the summer. Honest mistake kind of thing. The grievance was, I mean, it sat there. Once we understood, it was not a problem. That's why we kept working through it. And like I said, the outcome was to restrict some of the stuff that previously existed there. So it, the responsibility is no longer on the district to announce to CSEA president what is being interviewed, what jobs, and so on, but instead, it's the CSEA president's job to track those things. But instead, it's the CSEA president's job to track those things. So, in fact, it's more restrictive than it was before.
Okay. Thank you for that context. And the other section with the special service providers, acquisition of non-provational status, that's another one that I'm like, oh, okay. Again, if I missed it, I will own that.
No, I don't think you've missed it. The practice has been that Deb Mankins works these MOUs. And then that the master agreement says that every year MOUs should then be absorbed into the master agreement. So, that's part of the IBB process and we review them together. And so, then what comes forward is then ratified by the board. But if there's a request from the board for us to change practice that any MOU that we negotiate through legal counsel is given to the board for either a thumbs or a continuation, we're happy to adjust that. I'm just looking for the board president to decide if there's a, that's the new direction.
Okay.
Because it hasn't been practiced in the past.
Superintendent Gall framed it well. So, is that the directive from the board going forth with the MOUs? Do you want it to be informative after the fact or do you want to be part of the decision making process?
I think if it automatically rolls into the master agreement, then the board needs to be a part of deciding if it's an MOU that we even want to agree to.
Okay. Collective will of the board in this. I see two board members at this point in time. Director Bankus, Director Hayfley, do you have any feedback on this?
Not at this time.
Okay. So.
I don't either. I can see the MOU hearing as a means to accomplish work and move forward. But I also understand the comment that if the board is ultimately responsible, then we should have prior notice.
Dr. Carey, Director Carey, you have a comment on this or is it on a different topic that you?
I just had a quick question.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at the master agreement PDF and I'm control, I think memorandum of understanding. I guess my question would be, the logic makes sense to me that since this is an agreement between CSEA and the board, that any changes to the agreement, even MOUs, should come, you know, both through CSEA and through us. That makes sense to me. But if, and this is why I'm having trouble tracking this down, but if that process is outlined in the master agreement, it would surprise me if we could change it just by conversation up at the DIAS. You see what I'm saying?
So, even if, my understanding is, even if the MOU is agreed upon ad hoc for a certain issue that the district is facing with between CSEA and administration, before it comes into the master agreement, it has, the board has to be informed about it and be ratified. Not only here, but this language would have been shared in prior emails that the board received as far as the language change during the course of the conversation. Director Nelson, you had something to add on.
You're saying that the board is notified of all MOUs, but we don't officially vote on them?
I'm saying, no, we don't vote on MOUs, obviously we didn't. But if that is what the board wants to do going forth, sure. But when the MOUs go into the master agreement, that should have been tracked in the emails that we get from Ms. Artmer.
Yes, and this was. This was in there.
Okay.
But I'm saying that at that point in time, it even is, there's no point for the board to weigh in.
Okay.
Like that language was already agreed upon previously on behalf of the board by the district. And so, I'm just making a request for a little shift in the process that the board be involved in future MOUs before they're actually agreed upon.
Okay. Great. I'm, that question is put out to the board right now. And unless I have the collective will of the board to direct the superintendent to do that, that's the request that comes from Director Nelson as an individual board member. Do I have the will of the board that future MOU agreements come to the board as it is being worked out? And the board provides direction to the administration on the MOUs before they are signed as an agreement?
I think you got, oh.
Yeah. I've got two, three. Okay.
You have four.
And I have four. Okay. Superintendent Gall, that's the will of the board.
Great. I'll take that. And if it's okay, I do want to run this through Deb Mankins to make sure we're not running afoul of a process that currently exists. I don't have those things memorized. But I understand the intent. I'll take it to Deb Mankins. And unless there's feedback, we got it and that's the way we'll go.
Okay.
So, it falls to yes.
Thank you.
Any other feedback from the board at this point in time? Seeing none, Superintendent Gall, do you have any closing thoughts because you were part of the process too?
I just appreciate the board's willingness to give us the support of legal counsel to represent a contract between our largest employee group and the Board of Education. It really allowed the team, myself, Tamra, Nicole and Brandon, to represent as subject matter experts and not feel that we could be conflicted on either standing with or against the very people that we asked to do the work of the vision of the district. So, I think that created a new standard for us and I appreciate the board's willingness to step into that space.
Okay. Thank you. And I know that negotiations, by the nature of it, sometimes can be contentious. And having an independent neutral person in that environment takes some of the conflict out of it. And putting, whether it is going to be the superintendent or administrative staff or building principals into that role, that becomes sometimes conflict of interest out there. So, overall, I got to observe several of those sessions in person, sitting out there. And I appreciate all the collaboration and the productive discussions that happened out there. The negotiations process is always with the intent that at the end of it, we end up improving student outcomes. And also solve, find creative solutions to some of the challenges that have been plaguing the district over several years. And from that perspective, some of the highlights that you talked about, hard to fill schools, that is something that's coming new at this point in time in this master agreement. I appreciate both sides willing to come to an agreement on this. And when I look back at the three years that I've served, at least as a president, each year, we have moved the needle to improve student academic outcomes. And also while taking care of our staff, the first year, we added thirty minutes of instructional time in our elementary schools. And then last year, we increased the starting teacher salary compensation to fifty thousand. And this year, some of the productive discussions about hard to fill schools. And also professional development, compensation for reimbursement for some of the classes that the teachers may end up taking. Overall, I think these solve some of the issues that have been constantly plaguing the district. And compensation has also been addressed over the past three years consistently. What we are doing at ten and a half percent, I know that it's broken down into recurring and non-recurring compensation. But I've had an opportunity over the last two weeks to talk with several fellow board members from surrounding school districts and throughout the state of Colorado too. And what we are doing with the challenges that we face because of enrollment at ten and a half percent is really robust and competitive compensation. So, but all this would not be possible without productive discussions taking place collectively as a group. So, I do want to thank, I'm making one comment to not only you, but the other two employee groups that are coming up to, all employee groups coming together and prioritizing student outcomes and while supporting our staff at the same time. And to our executive staff members who are at the table, Superintendent Gall and Ms. Artmer and Dr. Comfort, thank you for your time and investment too in representing the board. And Tamra, Ms. Tamra Savet. Thanks for all of it. With that, seeing no further questions or concerns from the board, roll call please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agreement as presented in the resolution between the Board of Education and CSEA has been approved. Resolution, the next resolution approval of agreement between the Board of Education and Education Support Professionals. Director Hayfley, would you be able to make the motion or should I ask somebody from the board ayes here to make that motion?
If you don't mind, have somebody there do it, please. Thank you.
Director Nelson, Director Carey, you've got it. Director Carey, can you please make the motion for action item E three?
I move that the Board of Education adopts the agreement between the Board of Education and the Education Support Professionals, resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-six.
Second. Moved and seconded. Again, I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Gall and Director.
Dr. Comfort and Mr. Cook.
Okay. Meet and confer process with our Education Support Professionals was very productive. We did receive a very recent request for a change, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna brief that to the board tonight. And we'll discuss that. But first want to highlight a few things related to compensation. Again, ESP will receive a step, a one percent across the board increase. Will continue to obviously cover para and insurance premiums. And then a new addition for our ESP group this year is a service increment of three hundred and fifty dollars a year for ESP employees with ten consecutive years. And so, we, we think that that will be a really awesome way to recognize loyalty to the district. What was written in the resolution was, as the board knows, a request from the ESP meet and confer group for a twenty-four hundred dollar flat rate. That request has been changed to go back to the original six and a half percent. So, just to notify the board that is a budget neutral request, all of those numbers add up to the same amount. And so, we do bring that to the board. So, if that were approved tonight, then we would obviously make that adjustment to the resolution and then post the adjusted resolution as soon as we can. In terms of highlights, again, lots of really quality conversation. I think overall, we brought lots of clarity to some items in the handbook that needed additional clarity. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Cook for any additional thoughts.
So, thank you, Mr. Cook. Maybe you can start off by summarizing the entire negotiation process, what your takeaways are, but also provide some context on why you are requesting that change from twenty-four hundred dollars to six.
We'll do. And I thank all of you for the work that you've put in this year. The goal of the ESP council and the meet and confer team is simply care, equity and equality. And the negotiation process compared to previous years was very, we worked very collaborative, collaboratively together in an attempt for, like I said, care, equity and equality. Having Suzanne in the room, the liaison, was very beneficial to add transparency to the room and keep the energy positive. And that's, 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 that was the number one goal of this team. There were a lot of new faces in the room. So, we wanted to make sure that we all worked collaboratively together to ensure a positive outcome. There was, as far as the compensation package, the twenty-four hundred, once it was prorated, the additional amount was not clear on where that amount was going. So, we had, so that's the reason why we went back with the six point five percent for everybody. Either way, like Brandon said, the amount of money that's there will be the same no matter what. You already know it's hard to please everybody. But at the same time, we wanted, we wanted to make sure it was equitable for everybody.
Thank you. Board, any comments or feedback on the ESP negotiation process? Director Nelson?
Yeah, just, we're happy to serve ESP in this way. And if that's the request you're bringing, then certainly happy to change it and appreciate you pivoting and meeting the needs of your, your representation that you help. So, thank you.
I think planting that seed for the ten year to ten years and more service to the district, planting that seed is very crucial to this process. And I think that's something, first time something like that's ever happened. So, showing that appreciation to people that's been loyal to the district, we really appreciate that.
Thank you. And thank you for that feedback too. ESP are a critical component for the work that we are doing as a district. And every one of the ESP and I know that you have several groups under you, each one of you is valued and respected in what you bring to the table. I appreciate your feedback that the negotiations process this year, you also felt that support coming from all sides, that you are valued. That was the intent. So, thank you for that feedback and, and also providing some context as to why you requested that change in that non-recurring compensation. Seeing no further questions from the board, roll call please, Melissa.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the resolution approving the agreement between the Board of Education and ESP has been adopted by the board. Moving on to the next resolution, this is the approval of agreement between the Board of Education and Executive Professionals. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item E four?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves the agreement between the Board of Education and the Executive Professionals, resolution two thousand twenty-four dash forty-seven.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Dr. Comfort. Before you come, I did notice that there are several executive profession, ESP that are seated in the back too. I just want to acknowledge, a lot of you serve on the meet and confer team. So, thank you for your time on that. The four of you, I see, are there any more that I'm missing out there, the four of you, right? Okay, thank you for your time. Dr. Comfort and Superintendent Gall.
All right. Yep. Ms. Nash will be representing our Executive Professionals tonight. Again, a really quality process with meet and confer with our Executive Professionals. Had some really great conversations. Again, I believe we added a lot of clarity to the handbook where it was needed, just to highlight the compensation one more time. One percent increase to the base, a step. And then the six point five percent non-recurring in two payments, as well as the para contribution, as well as benefits. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Nash if she has anything she wants to add.
Thank you. It was a great process. I think for our employee group, the process always seems to go rather smoothly. It's more about conversation. We are excited with the packages that were offered and the ability to agree on some slight adjustments and change in some language. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any feedback or comments from the board? Thank you, Ms. Nash. I know that Mr. Johnson is serving and you took on that responsibility in representing the executive group. Thank you. Roll call please, Melissa. Oh, Director Rock.
Thanks. I'm just, I was just waiting for all three really, just to express appreciation for all of the employee groups. And so, you get it because you're up here last. But employees have a choice to work in District Eleven. And so, I'm glad that the three agreements were reached and I'm glad that you especially feel that it went smoothly because I know they can be contentious. And hopefully, the board will continue to, and I think we will, continue to step up and honor our employees as best we can within the budget restrictions that we might face next year. But thank you all for all of the work you're all doing.
Roll call please. Roll call please.
Director Bankes?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the agreement between the Board of Education and Executive Professionals for the upcoming school year has been adopted. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is the Certificate of Participation Approval. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item E5?
I move that the Board of Education approves the general project scope and financial allocations in the COP.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, just to provide some context and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Call after that. This item came as a discussion at a work session about the allocation of the $130 million and how it's going to be divided between the Palmer project and the other projects that have been highlighted out there. But with the scrutiny that the Palmer renovation is getting in the community, we want to make sure that we are going through this in a diligent, transparent process where everything is coming to the Board ayes and it's going through a formal Board approval process. And this was already covered as a thumbs up or provided as a thumbs up in a boardwork session, just coming up now to action so the Board can formally vote on it. Superintendent Call.
I bring forward Dr. Comfort, and I appreciate you setting the stage. We really don't have new information, so Dr. Comfort will be kinda doing a quick rehash of what we went through in the work session. Don't take his speed for any lack of accuracy or transparency, just in the honor of time. We've been through this a couple of times, and so if there are questions, please direct them to Dr. Comfort.
Good evening again, Board. I do apologize, you're gonna get tired of hearing from me tonight. And so just a quick recap, as President Mel Pakem shared, the timeline, the number of times we've, we've been meeting and having conversations. We did go through a, a deep discussion at a work session where the Board gave their thumbs up, and now we're here seeking a, a formal vote on project scope and financial allocation, so you'll see that on the calendar. Again, just as a reminder, the T-shaped strategy of some breadth across the system as well as some depth in one setting, so $20 million for HVAC, $5 million for bathrooms, $5 million for educational adequacy projects, all of those will be defined in greater detail as we move forward. All of those projects, the Board will have input in, and also will vote to stand those projects up as we go through the capital process. And then, I apologize if I didn't say $100 million at Palmer High School. Okay, so here is the, the allocation breakdown. These numbers are now very firm. We are in the middle of the process. Next Tuesday, this is a celebration, is when we actually go and sell the COPs. And so they will be open on the market, I think, from 8 to 11, and by 11:15, it will all be done. And I will have a wrap-up call, and then we'll talk about when, when the money shows up. And so you'll see here that we are still in good financial position to make this move. Those are the, the summary statistics. You will see over on the left, remember as part of a COP, there is, there is collateral and pre-construction and during construction, we have three schools listed as collateral. Those are because of their value and the amount of value that we'll be putting into Palmer. And then post-construction, that collateral will then obviously shift over to Palmer when, after we've made that investment.
Thank you for the update, Dr. Comfort. As I stated before, this has been discussed before at the work session. Board, do you have any clarifying questions or comments at this time? Director Ott.
Thank you. So, a lot of the details about the term and the lease and things like that are, are in our November 29th resolution, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, is that still accurate for the amounts, length of the terms, et cetera?
It, it is very accurate minus some of the, again, interest rates adjusted over time. We're in a better position now than we were, but remember, that's also why we did a max parameters resolution. And so there's no mechanism where we can be, we can be in a worse position than we were when the Board approved it. But all of the other details in that, in that resolution are still completely accurate.
All right. And so, when I talk to people about the COP, I always talk about paying it off soon.
Yeah.
And, but can you just give us that bit of parameter again? How, what the soonest we can pay it off is with the expectation that we're using our MLO dollars, and then also what the longest that might be?
Yep. So it is a 10-year call, which means at 10 years, if we have accrued the money, and then we can pay off all of, all of that COP at once. We also can, in COP terms, refund, in layman's terms, refinance for a better interest rate, which would then obviously bring down principal, or bring, bring down our interest. Or we can have some type of payoff schedule anytime after 10 years. So we can't really do anything until year 10, but after year 10, whatever the, the will of the Board over the next 10 years is, we will have the ability to either mitigate that debt all the way down or, or start to pay it down in a different way.
Thanks. And then I had one other question. If the, if the community, like after the year at, that we talked about last time, almost just last meeting, with that conversation about the community engagement plan, if the expectations given back to us from the community are different, how can that impact or will that impact, like how much we spend at Palmer versus somewhere else?
So.
Are we set?
We, we, we do still have flexibility.
Okay.
We do have, still have flexibility. There are processes for that. And so just as there is a timeline for construction related to bonds or COPs, and it's like, well, what if we're not all the way done? There's processes for that, and there's allowances. And so I won't by any means speak on behalf of the Board for, for the project allocation changing, but the, the mechanism of the COP, while there are some limitations, will not hold us completely firm to like, well, we actually need $101 million at Palmer. Well, sorry, you only said 100. We absolutely have the flexibility to, to adjust as needed.
Thank you.
So, but right now, when you are going next week to sell the COPs, these are the parameters that's listed on that, as it is listed on the slide at this point?
Absolutely. Now, again, we, we provided the detail we needed, but we didn't provide any specific detail because no decisions have been made. And so, and that was, we checked all of that information with, are we sharing enough information with the, the finance teams who are looking at this? They said we were sharing more than we needed to, in a good way. And so, again, there, there's mechanisms for us to, to make the moves that we need to make.
Director Nelson?
Just to remind everyone that there have been no specific renovation plans determined at this point. This is strictly the Board saying, we are going to dedicate an estimate of $100 million at Palmer. Now, team, we want you to go explore what the possibilities are and gather feedback from families, community, all of the people that are interested. We want to hear your input. There will be time for that. If you feel like, no, I didn't get to weigh in, it's because we're not there in the process yet. We're at the very beginning stages, and you will have an opportunity. And you will see us voting again, because once we go through the process, we'll have to vote on the contract itself. And so you're gonna be hearing about this quite often as we move forward. And just as a reminder that, you know, 85% of our budget goes towards salaries and benefits, and that does not leave a lot left over for capital improvements. And so COP is a, is a mechanism for us to be able to make some capital improvements with anticipation that future boards will need to probably go for a bond again. When you have a district the age of ours of 150 years, and average age of buildings around 50 or 60 years old, there are things that need to be upgraded and remodeled and fixed, and that costs money. And bonds are the mechanism to recapitalize school districts. And so the COP is gonna help us get a jumpstart. And for the schools that aren't going to be benefiting from this at this time, there will be projects in the future. We are not forgetting about you. We just have to start somewhere. So, when it comes to the collateral portion of these schools, the reality is our MLO dollars are guaranteed, and that's how we're paying for the interest. And so we are not gonna have to sell Russell Saban or Mitchell to, to cover this. It's just more procedure that that's listed. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Director Carey?
This is not the first time this particular question has been asked, but because I keep seeing confusion about it, I'm gonna ask it one more time. How much does a COP cost the taxpayer, again?
It does not cost the taxpayer any amount of money. We, we are completely self-funding this through our MLO capital fund.
Thank you.
So to footstomp what you brought up, Director Carey, this is not a tax increase. Bonds, which if future boards want to go in that direction, that would go as a election ballot issue, and that would be a tax increase, but this is not a tax increase. Seeing no further comments or questions, roll call please.
Director Bankes?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the resolution that was presented in front of the Board was adopted. Now, going back to an item that was moved from consent to action, this was policy BG. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item E6?
There we go. I move that the Board of Education adopts the revised policy BG.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, and again, this item has been discussed and reviewed by the Board at work sessions, and then as a non-action item. Earlier, as I mentioned in this meeting, the agenda was moved from consent to action. Director Ott, I'll come to you first since you wanted to move, you moved the, you requested that this item be moved from consent to action. Your thoughts and additional comments?
Thank you. I, just a few comments, one of which might need a thumbs up from the Board or comment from the Superintendent, that is regarding regulations. Do we want a, a regulation for the policy? I originally had concerns that the Policy Committee would be eliminated from this, but then I was reminded by a helpful individual that, no, we do have a policy BDF, still holds the Policy Committee as a standing committee at this time. So regulation might help the Board and, and people understanding the policy process with understanding the role of the Policy Committee and how the Board is getting feedback for policy discussion from our community. So I'm curious if the Board would be interested in directing the Superintendent for a regulation.
Superintendent Call, or Dr. X, do you have any comments on this too?
I'm not sure that I, I'm sorry, Superintendent Call, members of the Board, I'm not sure that I see that, what the specific steps of that regulation would be in terms of what is not already outlined inside of policy BG that we've just presented.
Okay. All right. Any feedback from fellow Board members?
Director Nelson?
I'll just repeat that I think we made policy BG more regulatory in some ways because it is the Board's governing document and how we're going to operate with policy. So I don't see that there's any holes or gaps that a regulation needs to come back and fill. And regarding, did you, what was that commit, that policy?
BDF.
BDF.
Our standing committees.
Okay, so we'll just need to now go back and reevaluate that policy, because in BG, we've now given the directive that when administration are recommending, recommending changes to policy, we expect for that individual to seek out guidance from relevant parties. And so that then is the manner that feedback is going to take place rather than the Policy Committee. So, we'll just need to add this to our list now to update.
All right. So in that case, if the Board does move through with that, then, and, and we revise BDF accordingly, then we will not, I'm getting, hearing your intent that we will not have a Policy Committee. And from my part, I, I will regret that because I think that that is a guarantee of diverse voices, even though it's not as diverse as I would like, but if we are, we need to be very careful, I think, how we proceed. And that is one of the reasons I wanted to bring this back, our off-consent, is I think we really, we really need to be careful with how we develop our policies and include voices from families which are disengaged and our students when it comes to policies that impact them. And that also would be true for any policies impacting staff who are not always paying attention, as we know. So, that is a concern. Second item in here that I wanted just to run by you all, under the second meeting, so this is item number two in the, the items that are numbered, 1, 2, 3, and it's the process. So, second meeting, the proposal shall be presented as a non-action item for additional discussion and Board action. So, really, we're sending it to Board action properly in the third step, and I'm not asking us to amend this necessarily, but we might want to at some point just define what we meant by Board action on a review of this policy. Board what?
Further Board edits.
Further Board edits? Okay.
Are you talking about the second meeting?
Second meeting, yes.
It could also be if at the second meeting, the Board is comfortable as an action to move it to consent.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to pull those out. And then just for general public consumption, the other, just a comment that was shared with me was something about the waiver role, and in here, I think we address it enough. It's not drawn, long and drawn out, but there's a comment about waiving policy and suspending policy for that matter, but specific to waiving policy, that that is a Board action, that the Board can waive policy and not the Superintendent. So, just to, for anyone who was concerned the Superintendent would be out there waiving policy, that is not the Superintendent's role, and so people would have to come to the, or the Superintendent would have to come to us to waive policy. So I believe that's covered sufficiently.
Where is that?
I think that's at the very, very end. Suspension repeal of, or no, maybe not. Oh, no, yeah.
That's suspension.
Well, temporarily suspended?
Yeah, I think it was further up. I will have to pull it up.
Because in the section Director Carey mentioned, it does specifically say a majority vote of the Board members.
Right here in the beginning of that page, it also says the Board, but it says the Board, not the Superintendent.
Right. So, page 1, bottom paragraph, "Under unusual circumstances, the Board may temporarily approve a policy to meet emergency conditions. The Board may also waive policies to facilitate attainment of district level or school level goals. However, the above procedure is required before the temporary policy or policy waiver shall be considered permanent." So that's just for, for the person who is concerned, that's a safeguard for us to fully consider and have feedback, in theory. So, thank you for seconding that motion and pulling that off consent and, and for the discussion.
Thank you. And Ms. Olson, if you can move up to that first page a little bit, right there, right there is good. I think it does say, after the third bullet point in that paragraph that follows, "During discussion of a policy proposal, the Board shall seek out the views of community stakeholders and staff," to address the concern that Director Ott brought up, the intent as the Board goes through policy proposals is to seek out the views of community stakeholders and the staff, and that directive is also given to the Superintendent that, after hearing recommendations of the Superintendent and the viewpoints of the community and staff in the following section. So, the intent is always to get diverse stakeholder input, and, and as we go through this process, we discussed about it at the work session, there are going to be a learning we discussed about it at the work session, there are going to be a learning curve and things that we may not be prepared to adjust at this time. Four months down the road, we can go back and review this policy if necessary and put additional safeguards in there if something is not transpiring as we think it should be going about. So let the community be aware that the intent is there as we go through this policy development process to do it in a collaborative manner. With that, roll call. Yep. Go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted to speak to that this new process actually allows for more input from the public because we're having an additional public meeting where we're going to be discussing policies. And the board has decided that we are pulling operational guidance out of policy. That is not the area that we are to work in. That's up to the superintendent and his team. So that, all of that information will now be on accountable to the superintendent and his team. And oftentimes, the Policy Committee would be hashing out more of that operations side of what was in policy. And so the board is now taking full accountability and ownership of policy. And that's the lane that we are to be in is governing a body and kicking now the operational aspects of it over to where it belongs in the superintendent and administrative team. So the, the process is going to be a little different, but there will still be plenty of transparency and opportunity to get that diverse perspectives and feedback. And if something's not working, then we will hold, we will hold individuals accountable to fix it, including ourselves.
Roll call, please. Ms. Olson?
Director Bankus? Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malhakam?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the policy BG has been adopted. I just looked at the scripted agenda in front of me, Ms. Olson, and I know that we had a mandatory stop at 7:00 PM for public hearing on the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. We are a little past seven, but since you didn't stop me, I'm assuming there was no public comments. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the non-action item, use of portion of beginning fund balance. This is new information, Superintendent Gall, that comes in front of the board for annual review and approval.
Yeah. Dr. Comfort?
Yeah, good evening again, board. This is one of a number of resolutions related to our budget that we'll be bringing tonight. This is the board authorizing the use of a portion of our beginning fund balance. And so you can see, if we can, is it possible, Melissa, to just open that resolution? You can see that we carry a general fund, beginning fund balance of roughly $100 million, but you can see we don't actually have access to $100 million. A lot of that is already established and set aside. And so that's what this document entails. I do want to say that we've added a column this year for transparency, which is, you'll see it as unspent budgets, 2% of general fund budget expenditures. Remember, anytime we carry a mismatch, we do have to by state law acknowledge that we have fund balance to cover that. And so we know 100% of budgets are not going to get spent down. And so this is our effort to add clarity to what we've been talking about as the mismatch. Outside of that new line, everything else on here is consistent with past years.
Thank you. Dr. Comfort, any questions or feedback from the board? Seeing none, is this an item that can be moved to consent? Do you?
I assume it can.
Okay. Is the board comfortable moving this to consent? Okay. So this item will move to consent. Ms. Olson? Moving on to the next item on the agenda. And I think it's you, Dr. Comfort, again, this is the designation of the fund balance. And Superintendent Gall, Dr. Comfort? Dr. Comfort?
Yeah, and so this is designation of our 23-24 fund balance, so that that date is not wrong. As we're preparing for next year's audit, we do have to designate what we believe our fund balance will be or has been in the 23-24 school year. And so you'll see if we compare this resolution to the resolution we just talked about, they're consistent, but they're not exactly the same because we're talking about two different fiscal years. And so that's what I have.
Again, thoughts or questions? Seeing none, again, this can be moved to consent, I'm assuming, moving to consent from the board? Yes. This will also move to consent, Ms. Olson. Moving on rapidly to the next one, inter-fund borrowing. Dr. Comfort?
Yep, and so again, the board provides authorization for us to cross funds for borrowing. This is all a matter of timing. This isn't that any of these funds don't have the money they need, it's just they don't have it in the time that they need it. So as an example, food and nutrition services will have costs associated with them in August, but they won't get reimbursement until later in the semester. That's very consistent, obviously, with grants where we always seek reimbursement. And so this is the general fund loaning some money that will eventually get paid back when we receive the, that revenue back.
Thoughts or questions from the board? Seeing none, move to consent? Great. This will also move to consent. Moving on to the next item, this is the appropriation of the fiscal year 24-25 budget. And in accordance with the budget laws and the state of education, the board adopts the district budget annually. Superintendent Gall, I'll first turn it over to you.
We're super excited about the budget that we'll be proposing. This has been an ongoing conversation. In a highly restricted resource environment, the ability of the board to give the direction for the administration to direct funding into and in support of the classroom is going to be the difference maker for us that will continue to separate District 11 from other surrounding districts. We believe that the number one way to student achievement is?
Access to high-quality instruction.
And this is just probably the strongest budget in my two years, but certainly in the other districts that I've been in, that really commits towards that cause. So into that, Dr. Comfort.
So just to give some context to the board and the community also, Dr. Comfort is giving a brief presentation at this time. This is scheduled as a topic later this evening for a work session. So if the board has further questions on it, wait on, wait till the work session, but I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Nelson.
Okay, yeah, very high-level overview of our proposed 24-25 budget. So as a reminder, obviously, our budget is largely based on our student enrollment. And so as has been shared with the board before, you'll see that we are expecting our traditional enrollment to be consistent with this year and then the addition of over 1,100 new charter school students. You'll see that we, we get funding a little differently for online students, that's why that's called out. And then you'll see the total student count there. So basic math there is you take the student count times our new per pupil amount, which is $11,238. So it's just shy of $750 additional per pupil for next year and you'll get our total program revenue. You'll notice there that that total program as a percent of all general fund revenue is 88%. That's because we do have, we do receive other funds. And so if anybody wants to, in the large budget book, page 10, it'll show additional revenues that we get from a variety of things. And so that all makes up that difference between 88% and the 100%. We also get additional funding from the state for what they call categoricals. And so those are things like special education, transportation, all of those types of things. And so that's not in the normal total program revenue, but would also account for that difference between 88.9% and 100%. Okay, in terms of resources available, as we just discussed or shared, we're projecting beginning of the year fund balance just shy of $100 million. You'll see there the revenue that we're expecting for total program. And then total transfers, transfers out, so net general fund revenue just shy of $400 million. And then you'll see there then on the bottom, our planned uses of that. And as a reminder, in Colorado, every school district is unique in their makeup of state funding and local funding. In District 11, in large part because of our MLAs, we're a 50-50, well, roughly a 50-50 district. And so that's how our breakdown in funding comes. Just as a reminder, if we were to get more money from our taxpayer, that just means, one more dollar from the taxpayer just means that the state would remove $1 from their share, right? So the state determines our funding rate and that rate can shift year to year based on income that they're receiving from taxes versus MLO versus what we receive from the state. Okay? So in terms of a breakdown, you're seeing that just shy of 80% of our entire general fund budget is going to school-based resources broken down by category. We're working really hard to grow that instructional category. As you can imagine, though, across a $335 million budget, to make a 1% increase is over $3 million. And so I think, you know, we'll work over the next couple of years to be ambitious in those goals. And then as Director Nelson pointed out in terms of our additional spending, she was, she was wrong. She said 85% of our budget. It's actually 84.9% of our budget goes towards compensation. So we'll mark a demerit for her on that. But largely, we are a system of people. And so as anybody can imagine, that largely goes towards compensation and that was referenced tonight in the compensation packages. And then significant new expenditures, we've listed a variety of new expenditures up here. You'll see here again, largely that's compensation, which goes directly with the slide that we just shared. Over $23 million when we think about recurring and non-recurring compensation. Again, remember, we did set aside $1 million for summer bridge next year. We will adjust that as needed at mid-year when we, when we know what we need to know after this year's summer bridge, but we've set aside some money as some seed. And then you'll, you'll see some other new significant expenditures this year. And then other funds in terms of appropriation. So for every fund on here other than the MLO, that is their fund, right? So risk management, their total appropriation is $7.2 million. You'll see here one number that doesn't look like the others, that capital reserve, capital project budget has skyrocketed. That's not because we have not spent money, that's because that is where the COP is designated to go. Okay, so that's why that number has jumped significantly. That's also why our total appropriation has increased by so much because we're looking at an additional $130 million. Okay? But just one piece of clarity there in terms of the MLO, obviously, our total appropriation for the MLO is not $3.5 million. Everything outside of that $3.5 million, that's kind of the leftover, we're going to talk about later tonight in the plan amendment, but that's what's left over still yet to be spent. Everything else has been appropriated to other funds. So money has already been moved to the general fund. A large amount has already been moved to the capital fund. So I just want to be clear that we're not saying our MLO budget is only $3.5 million. And then you'll see there the remainder of the funds and appropriations.
Okay, so thank you.
Before you jump to questions, I just want to close the book on it because I know, I know not everybody will pay attention to the work session. This could have been a disastrous year and if your LinkedIn and Instagram feed is as geeky as mine, you get a lot of education news. There are districts around the country right now who are cutting massive amounts of staff, losing because of the Essor cliff that's come. We, having that perfect storm of also actually coming out of decreasing enrollment averaging, that costs us money to do that. The fact that we're presenting in a very nonchalant, professional way, a budget that focuses on the goals and the strategies of the district and we're not caveating and putting a disclaimer on, well, you know, that would have been an Essor thing or had we not had decreasing enrollment averaging. The ability, and this is really the culmination of a two-year plan that we started last year when we sat down on the Fund Balance Task Force. And we said, we needed to reserve dollars in our non-recurring, in our reserve to ensure that we could get out of the corner that so many other districts in America they're backed in right now. So the long-range planning, which isn't consistent in many school districts in America, but the longer, longer range planning that this board has allowed the administration to present puts us in the position that we can present a very strong budget aligned to mission strategy and vision of the board.
Thank you. And as I requested the board, if we can hold off on the questions until the work session that follows, if you have any questions. But I do appreciate your feedback, Superintendent Gall, on the focus of the budget and the priority being investing the limited resources that we have closest to students in the classrooms. I appreciate that the staff cuts at our school levels have been minimal or nothing at all, but more so you looked at central administration in efficiencies and trying to present this budget with student focus in mind. Thank you, Dr. Comfort. You shouldn't go too far because I think the next one, you are back again. So thank you for the presentation. This will be adopted formally as an action item at the June 12th board meeting. The next item on the non-action agenda is the MLO Plan Amendment. Again, this is new information, Superintendent Gall.
Dr. Comfort?
Okay. Excited to bring to you only our second MLO Plan Amendment of the year. And this is really about where we want, where the MLO Committee wants to allocate resources. If the board remembers, when we looked at our certification back in December and January, that the board approved the inflationary clause of the 2017 MLO, which this year or last year for this year was at 8%. And so based on feedback from the board and the MLO Committee, which also went through the District Accountability Committee, we would like to allocate that new recurring money because of that inflation in addition to recurring money that was unallocated last year to cover the addition of our new charter schools so that the remainder of the PIPs in our MLO will remain unaffected. And so that's what you'll see there, that's approximately, in fact, we're actually going to over-budget for it so that when we adjust at mid-year, we won't have to give more money out. We did have a really good discussion as an MLO Committee, though, about getting a little tighter on that and maybe spending more at the beginning of the year and then adjusting as needed in the mid-year. But in terms of this year, we're still going to over-budget a little bit and make sure we're in the clear. Okay? So that's part one. Part two is the non-recurring revenue. So we have non-recurring or fund balance revenue also in the MLO. And so that's as a result of a few things. PIPs that have not spent all of their money as well as, if you remember, part of the MLO was to buy down the remainder of the bond debt, which we have successfully done, and there's some remaining. And so with part of that fund balance or that remaining non-recurring money, the MLO Committee wanted to allocate it to address a couple of pertinent needs that align with district strategy. And so one of those is secondary curriculum related to study sync. So that's our secondary ELA curriculum. And this will be extending that contract for a year. What this will allow is for Ms. Acevedo and her team to go through an ELA adoption K to 12 or K to 10 or whatever the right grade level is. So instead of just thinking about elementary and then secondary, they'll be able to look at the adoption of ELA across the system, which I think will be really great. Additionally, we want to continue to provide some dyslexia supports out of the MLO. I'm sure Director Nelson will be very happy about that. We want to fund two elementary preschool playground upgrades. And so Ms. Hoteling shared some visualizations of those upgrades with the MLO Committee. They were very excited about that, as well as add a set of middle school bathroom renovations. And so that's what the MLO Committee voted and approved, also went through DAC and their approval for how we want to allocate the non-recurring resources that are available.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that update and also sharing with the community that because of this allocation to charter schools and the non-recurring money going to these projects that are out there, the rest of the PIPs are not going to be impacted, the rest of the PIPs stay the same. Questions from the board, Director Nelson?
Just a comment, a thank you to the Milevi override committee for all their hard work this year and just a request, if you're watching and listening and interested in joining the team, we need people to join the MLO Committee, especially if you're a parent in the district. We would love to have you. That committee is well understaffed. You're a volunteer, so I don't know what the right word is, but just wanted to give a shout out and put it out there. They meet once a month, Tuesday. Think about it.
It's a ton of fun. And we provide food.
Thank you. So if anybody is? So if anybody is interested in serving in that Mill Levy Oversight Committee or any of our other DAC District Accountability Committees, get in touch with the appropriate person. Seeing no further comments or questions, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's non-action. Great. Thank you. Yep, okay. Yeah, this can move to consent, right? Thumbs to consent? Okay, moving on to the next non-action agenda item. This is the district insurance policy. This is again new information, Superintendent Gall.
Jessica, Hank, come on forward.
Hello, board members. Hank Condon, the Risk Manager for the school district. For the first time, we're bringing a renewal for the property insurance policy for board approval based on EIR. The premium exceeded $1 million for the first time for the property insurance. We received a quote last week for $1,460,255, although some good news today, that quote got home office approval at Chubb and actually dropped to $1,36,375. Saving a little bit of money. We've had some increases over the last three or four fiscal years. There are also some changes to the coverages. The main change being that the wind and hail deductible is increasing to $500,000 from $100,000. We have a wildfire, moderate high exposure at one of our middle schools, which will drive up business income expense and income loss of utilities. The waiting periods will go up to seven days, currently at 24 hours. Big changes, earthquake coverage is being reduced to a total of $25 million from $40 million. And then finally, the last change is an increase to the auto property damage deductible up to $250,000. It had previously been $100,000 with a $1 million sublimit in coverage.
Is that it? Thank you. I'm just looking at your documentation that you provided just for comparison's sake. Fiscal year 21, '22, our property insurance was $556,000. So in three years' time, this has doubled from $556 to over a million dollars.
And that's not unique to District 11. That's industry-wide, that's statewide, more so for public entities and especially public entities. There's just been a lot of hail damages and earthquakes and wildfires. It's not been a good market for property casualty industry as a whole.
Yep. And we, as residential property owners, also see the impact in our own residential property insurance. Board, questions or concerns? Director Nelson?
Just a comment that I appreciated you speaking to shopping this and what the normal timing is that we shop this and then the comparative quotes and all of that information. Having that in there was really helpful because that was definitely a question I would have asked, so thank you.
And we've already indicated to our broker that we definitely want to shop it next year.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further. Oh, Director Bankus, I see your hand up.
From what I understand, there seems to be a significant difference in the amount of liability that the district will encounter with 24 hours to seven days, and there was one other thing that you had said. So do we have, within our budget, the funds to back up our share of liability until insurance kicks in?
In terms of the waiting period, we've got some excess capacity at schools if we had a school be impacted by a wildfire, and that does only impact one of our schools. It's not district-wide. But we also have contingency funds within the risk management budget to address unusual occurrences.
And in your analysis, that's enough to cover any eventuality?
Yeah, I'll jump in. We are not 100% insured, and we don't have the ability to make up the gap of a significant, you know, catastrophic event like a wildfire. You just even heard that we lowered our coverage on earthquakes from $40 million to $25 million. Forty million isn't going to cover a single elementary school, and so $25 million is not only going to cover a half of an elementary school. So I think, Director Bankus, to your question, the gap is so large, which is why the rates are increasing. Peers of mine in Florida, school districts are dropping coverage altogether because they can't afford to cover their buildings due to tropical storms and hurricanes. And so we're no longer in a place where we know we're good, it's just how or where we get the money. We're having to mitigate risk in different ways and just navigate the unknowns of the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully, we don't have to deal with earthquake issues in Colorado out here, volcanoes and stuff like that, so we have serious issues if we go in that direction. Seeing no further comments or questions, is this consent item, the board, can this be moved to consent? Moving on to the next non-action item that is on the board agenda, which is the Spring 2024 Instructional Materials and Secondary Course Approval. This is again new information, Superintendent Gall.
Tamara, you coming forward, or Liz is going to lead? If Tamara and Liz come forward. And we got the clicker? Got to have the clicker.
Good evening, President Mel Packham, Vice President Haley, and Board Directors. My name is Liz Tenkate, and I serve as the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. It's our pleasure to come before you as the CNI team for the Spring 2024 Curricular Materials Course Adoption Process, which is scheduled once during the fall and once during the spring. As you know, the Board of Education has the responsibility to approve course requests and textbook materials. As stated in Board of Education Policy IJJ, all proposals are available for public review prior to board adoption. The proposals were available for review online and in person in the D11 Academics Office from April 8th through April 15th and from May 13th through May 17th. Comments shared during the public review process have been shared with each of you as part of the adoption process. This process is aligned to a cycle that allows us to manage our finances by spacing the adoption of materials over time, aligning purchases with current availability in our budget, and bringing coherence to our system with the use of common resources. Some of the courses in curriculum adoption we'll be presenting include resources for world languages, VAPA, mathematics, PE, science, and social studies. The largest curriculum adoption this cycle is the social studies adoption of new resources for three required courses at the high school level: world history, US history, and government/... civics, excuse me. This adoption builds coherence, consistency, and alignment with the updated 2022 Colorado State standards within our D11 system at the high school level. Within this adoption, a need surfaced from the review to ensure that during training and implementation, we focus on ensuring that the timeline of history is at the forefront of teaching. Chronology and history will be emphasized and discussed with teachers in training and lesson development to ensure that students understand accuracy of dates. For tonight, we'll walk through the four different categories of course material adoption, which are instructional resources that are print-only, course revisions, new courses, and instructional resources with digital resources. You have a copy of all these materials. I will just go through the names of the courses, and our facilitators in each content area are here to answer any specific questions you may have. We'll start with spring instructional resources, print-only, and that's short. We are recommending two novelettes to be used in world language classrooms. The next category, course revisions. We are proposing to change the Unified PE K-12 from Partners PE to Unified PE. Next category is new courses. These courses include high school Unified Theater, Theory of Knowledge III and IV, IB Geography Standard Level, IB Global Politics Standard Level, IB Economics, IB Business Management, IB German HL, Intermediate Science Research I, II, and IH, and walking and hiking for fitness. The next category is instructional resources with digital. There are two under mathematics, Envision Algebra I and Envision Geometry. Four resources under world language. This, I may not say correctly. Claudette. Niu Blickwinkel, Envo Salta, Klase, and Hola Mundo. And then last, three text and digital resources for social studies. Last but not least, we are making the recommendation to adopt McGraw-Hill for the three required high school courses. This recommendation comes after following the full procurement and CNI processes. In the slide deck for social studies, which we'll go into in just a moment, you'll notice a slight change in Slide 3 from what was originally posted on board docs. In alignment with procurement policies, we have removed the final scoring by the review committee. And those three classes are United States Government/Civics, US History and World History. All of these resources build engaging learning opportunities where students can work individually and collaboratively to analyze information, critique arguments, and make connections. And now we'll go into the slide deck, which gives an overview of the RFP process for our largest recommended adoption, the high school social studies textbook adoption. This slide shows the RFP process and timeline, which started in September, the review cycle, reviewing resources, CNI request, finding the accounts during creating criteria, market research, then CNI selection, so committee reviewing the materials, and down-selecting, an initial materials review, then an evaluation committee, and then finally, public review. The evaluation committee consisted of three assistant principals, four teachers, six community members who reviewed the physical and digital materials, observed vendor presentations. The evaluation criteria that they used to look at the resources were the academic standards for social studies, resource support, so how easy is it to use as well for teachers, transparency, bias, omission of information. The committee's recommendation was to adopt McGraw-Hill. You can read, there are a few comments from committee members, and then a list of features within this social studies resource. There are digital and physical resources. This curriculum supports D11 graduate profile development, has engaging lessons, varied resources, online platforms that work with our platform in Schoology, digital app, translated materials in multiple languages, including Disgraphia font, and augmented reality activities. These are the resources and courses the Curriculum and Instruction Department is recommending for board approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Comments, questions? And I know that you have several of your content facilitators up here to, and Ms. Acevedo's up here to talk. Comments, questions from the board? Director Jorgensen?
My question is on the math, the Envision Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. The question I had was, I mean, it's a half a million dollar price tag. Are we, what was, I read through all the requests. What was the need for this purchase? Just was it the new digital access piece to it? Was, I mean, math hasn't really changed in a few decades. What was the need for that purchase? And then my other concern, that I'm sure we can have an answer to, was that this was the amount for the next six years, and I just don't want to tie the budget hands of this board beyond even when I'm serving. So if you could speak to that as well in your response.
This is Paul Bungie, our math facilitator.
Good evening, members of the board. To answer your question, Secretary Jorgensen, the initial response to action to have this put in our schools came from our high school teachers. They're using pretty outdated resources. In fact, the resources date when standard revision has happened. So they're using textbooks that don't align with the revised Colorado academic standards for math. And so having an outdated resource, not really reviewing anything at the high school level, as far as I know in my time being in this position, it just hasn't been done. And so there was a big voice from the high school teachers, and so listening to the people that represent our students in those buildings was important for them and for me. And so we went through kind of a soft RFP process. There was nothing really formal because we didn't know if we were going to have the funds or not. And so we went through it to have a selection in case we had funding to be able to pay for it. And when we went through the process, we were able to create an IBR that was approved. And so that's where the money came from to purchase the Algebra I and Geometry. So I just want to make sure I clarify, because you had mentioned Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. So we only have Algebra I and Geometry up for board adoption now, and we are going to run a short cycle next fall for the Algebra II resources. And so to clarify your question around, did I answer your question around the purpose?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I just saw Algebra II in there, but you didn't give me the separate timeline, so I'm making a note of that.
Okay. The way that the quote worked for Envision was it was extremely cost-efficient to do a long-term deal with them. A one-year deal was just about the same amount, but with a big company like Savis or Envision, you're able to, if you're able to pay upfront more, the cost drastically decreases. And so that amount on the quote is for six years of the license to be able to access digitally, and all of the teacher additions and student additions that would be in the hands of kids and teachers upfront. The only thing that would be a reoccurring cost would be any additional needs. Even the students' consumables are included in that price. So like, we got the quote of the amount of materials needed to each school that got allocated out, and we're able to use that year to year. Like, we don't have to have an extra expense of that unless, let's say, Dordi gets 100 kids within a year, which would be fantastic, then we would have to find the way to purchase those materials.
Okay. Is that the, it mentions in numerous places the interactive and real-world scenarios that give them a chance to have the unique experiences. Is this something that we could preview between now and when we approve it?
I could certainly work on getting that information for you. I know that that would most likely be present on the digital platform, so I can work with our high school content facilitators as well to see what we can get coming for you guys.
Yeah, that'd be cool to see. Thank you.
So the request from Director Jorgensen was, this is coming as action item in June 12th, between now and June 12th. Okay. Thank you. I see Director Haley, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, President Mel Packham. I have a question about the social studies curriculum, and the, there's a caveat to that, but the question is, is this a package deal, the world history, US history, and US government books? Do they have to be purchased all three together? Do they have to be purchased all three together?
Yes.
Okay, well, the reason that I'm asking is, you know, we just got new books from McGraw-Hill for US Government that were published in 2018, which meant we got them after that. So they're not more than six years old already being in the classroom. And considering they were already published by McGraw-Hill, is there a reason why we need to spend money to have a whole nother new book for US Government from McGraw-Hill? Is there some way we can get supplemental material without having to purchase the entire curriculum over again, considering, you know, the Constitution hasn't changed in six years?
So I was going to say a couple of things. The Colorado State standards were updated in 2022. So I think that's a factor. We're also really looking at having the most updated, coherent sequence of materials for our teachers and students as they move through these three courses. Excuse me.
So you're saying there's, because the standards have changed, we need to purchase a curriculum about a topic that hasn't changed?
Yeah, absolutely right. I mean, the topic is addressed in the standards. And so we have to align to the standards that we're expected to teach that have been updated in 2022. Vice President Heifly, this is Tamara Acevedo speaking. I would also say Okay, great. Okay, you can see me. Right, yes. Right, right, right. I can't see you, but you can see me. I also, to the materials and the resources, we don't, we don't have, while there are different high schools that have certain resources available, we don't have consistency even across the year that you're talking about. We actually have a longer range of years than the year you described. So not only do we have a lack of consistency in those resources, but we have a lack of alignment to the updated Colorado academic standards.
Okay, thank you.
And in addition, you also indicated that this is coming as a package deal. So purchasing all this together might be cost beneficial at this time. Okay. Director Heifly, you are good? I'm assuming so.
Yes, thank you.
Director.
Thank you. Certainly, a lot has even changed in the last six years. So I appreciate that we are updating. And I also appreciate, you know, following policy and the process of getting the feedback and the committee. So a couple of questions. One, were the teachers involved in the committee, were they Social Studies and History teachers?
Yes.
All right, great. And then this also sounds like a great way to jump into some of that digital resources. And Director Jorgensen was just mentioning some of that. Can you give us an idea of what, how that is supported with McGraw-Hill and maybe some of that augmented reality we're reading about in here? What is, what does that mean? Will it make learning more fun or engaging? I'm just curious.
It does make learning more fun and engaging. They have applications within Active Learn, which is a platform that works through our Schoology, where students can kind of go into this simulation of various, like, World History or US History topics.
All right. Thank you.
Can you also introduce yourself or community?
Oh, yes. I'm Alyssa Slater, the K-12 Social Studies facilitator.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen, back again.
Yeah, just to revisit Director Heifly's point. I understand the bundle cost. Is there, there was not many changes in 2022 per that legislation. I've been keeping track of that. There's a couple of things for us to update around certain minority groups and things like that. Did we shop a supplemental piece, a little booklet? Or, you know, was that considered? I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to save us money so we can reallocate it to other things that would be purposeful if we can. I just don't know if it, you know, hey, we got the bundle and that's it? Or if it's, no, we really did here, so we could do this, we could do that. I mean, do we explore that? And I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here. I'm just trying to be physically conservative with our money if we really, as Director Heifly said.
I'll jump in and take the beating of the horse. The charge for CNI in the committee was not, is there supplemental to what already exists? It was, how do we meet the standard as presented by the state and follow policy? Curriculum selection, it can be a very controversial subject. Finding what is as close to the middle ground that gives our teachers the resources to be able to ebb and flow based upon the needs of the student in that learning environment. We felt that this was the most complete package that met our needs and gave us the runway then to not be talking about curriculum every six months and get back to the teaching and learning that we wanted to have happen. So if there is a cheaper option on there, I think that then maybe goes over to Chris in our final procurement phase of if there's a, hey, if we buy two, do we get one free? Or can we push one off to the side? But that wasn't the charge of the committee. And, you know, we stand on the recommendation that we made to the board tonight.
Can I add one thing to that?
Go ahead.
Superintendent Goll, I just would also say it's important to know in terms of having consistency across resources. While we mentioned a newer resource that would be in some schools but not all schools, there's a variance in all of these resources that align to standards between five and almost 20 years. So updated materials, consistency across instructional resources and programming across the high school is the main key and importance there. It couldn't be handled with supplementary resources.
Director Nelson.
I had a question on the IB courses. Just, there are several, like, four or five new ones, which is exciting. But I'm, just wanted a little bit of background on, is it that the IB programming, International Baccalaureate people said, you need to now start offering these courses? And there are some that are going to be removed with these being added? And then a follow-up question is, I don't believe there were, maybe I missed it. Were there materials for us to review on this? Or do they not need additional materials for, like, Theory of Knowledge, Economics class? I think there's a Social Studies one perhaps. And so I'm just curious about the curriculum that they use in those courses.
Yeah, so the courses that are specific to IB are a course that comes to any IB school. It's very specific because it's gone through a very thorough vetting process with the International Baccalaureate Organization. Alyssa Slater can speak to the specifics around why we are adding these specific courses.
I've been helping Palmer with their IB pathway. And these courses change to help move forward their IB for all culture. So courses, in this case for Social Studies, if they had an AP course, they made it into an IB course. So for economics, for instance, instead of having the AP micro and macroeconomics, they changed it to the IB diploma economics course.
That sounds great. And then they don't need books or materials?
I think they're good to go.
Okay. Well, I'm excited to see that program at Palmer just continue to grow and expand. And very exciting what's going on.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for everybody's input that gave feedback, the community members that came and wrote little notes when they reviewed all of the materials. Thank you for doing that. It was entertaining for me to look at some of the, like, German or Spanish books. I mean, like, I can't review this. It's in a different language. So to the person that could read Spanish and talk about those books specifically, that was awesome.
Thank you, Director Nelson. So seeing no further comments or questions from the board, the request was from Director Jorgensen to review some material. Other than that, there is no other request that I at least gathered from the board at this point in time. This will return as an action item at the June 12th agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to the next item on the agenda. This is the cell phone policy. The item was introduced by Vice President Heifly and Director Carey during the May 15th work session. And now it's coming on the board agenda as a non-action item for discussion. Dr. X is up here. Dr. X, you want to share something? And then we'll open up the
Yeah, I don't have much to share. But thank you again, Board of Education, Superintendent Goll. Good to see you again this evening. We have done some corrections and some modifications from the work session regarding policy JICK. I will apologize in advance. The alphabet soup got me on this one. JICK, actually, when we bring it back, if it does move to action, will be JICJ. I got confused a little bit there and noticed that today. So I'll make sure that I correct that and align it as appropriate. As was mentioned, this was a policy that was brought to us by the Board of Education and Director Carey. And we are providing the first official draft of this tonight for information.
Thank you. I will turn to you, Director Carey, first. Do you have any additions or thoughts on this? Thank you. Director Heifly, do you have any thoughts or additions before opening it up for the rest of the board?
No.
Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate both of you taking time to construct or come up with the language, the first draft language, and then present it at the work session. You had opportunities to interact with the community and also input some of that feedback in there. Any comments or questions or clarity from the board? Seeing none? Okay, you do. Director Jorgensen.
Just a comment on, looking at the redline version that we added the language there in the first paragraph, during academic periods is prohibited. There's a lot of data around how to regulate cellphone use during the school day, not just during academic periods. And so this is an operations piece, but just a note of significant data around the topic of having a cellphone-free school day, not just a, hey, turn it, because, I mean, you're going to have kids turning it on in the passing period, turning it back off. However that operation side looks, there are a lot of data around supporting it throughout the entire school day. So I don't know if we want to consider that data in changing that language of during academic period to school day, or we won't leave that just the operations side of Mr. Goll and his team. But Mr. Goll, the data does support a cellphone-free school day, not just during academic periods. So I just wanted to make note of that. And I'm happy to provide the link to that data from a book called The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt. It's a, the Mitchell keynote speaker mentioned it, and that was my second confirmation, as well as Mr. Bruce Cole from Doherty mentioning that book. If you're a parent and you have kids, it will rock your world.
Thank you. And as far as your input as, with respect to it being a school day, I would say that that falls under the operational review of the superintendent. Let him, yeah, let him go about devising and plan. And just like with the attendance policy and the discipline policy, Superintendent Goll is authorized to come up with a plan after this, over the summer. He may provide a preliminary version of that 30,000-feet view at next week's board retreat and then come up with a more fleshed-out implementation plan before the beginning of the school year. Any other thoughts or comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, is the board comfortable moving this to consent item? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the student contact and discipline policies. And this was, again, an item that was discussed at work sessions and also at the board meeting. So Superintendent Goll, I see Mr. Brandt and Dr. X up there. Okay.
Good evening, board. Tonight, we will be formally introducing some revisions, some changes to two sections of the J-series policy, the JI series, which is Student Conduct, and then the JK, which is Student Discipline. And I won't take any more of your time or anyone else's, and I'll hand this over to Director Brandt.
Thank you. Good evening, board. These were reviewed May 8th and had some discussion, some feedback. Took the feedback that was recommended by various board members, have made the changes. And it was also recommended just to upload the clean versions. So that's what I provided was just clean versions. I think they're also very well-formatted and pretty ready to go. So you may find some, but I think for the most part, everything is as clean as it's going to be. And open to any further feedback or questions that you all might have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you did in implementing some of the requests from the board and putting the clean versions up there. Thoughts or comments from the board on this set of policies? Director Nelson.
I just could use some clarity on the difference between having JICDA versus just JIC? And why couldn't they just be one? One's called Student Conduct and the other is Code of Conduct? And so, I don't know.
State law requires that we have each policy.
Okay. All right then. Would it make sense? I don't know. I'm just thinking about the title, Code of Conduct. Would it make sense to just add Student Code of Conduct on JICDA? Do we have an Employee Code of Conduct? Like, so that we have that distinction? I don't know. Anybody?
No, I would defer to you first. Is there any thought or feedback on calling it Student Code of Conduct?
I don't have any objections. I mean, that's essentially what we're talking about. So if that's what the rule of the board is, we can absolutely make that change.
There is no requirement that we call this Code of Conduct?
Not that specific, no. Content is what the statute primarily focuses on.
Then looking at the board, is the board okay calling this by a show of thumbs, naming the Student Code of Conduct? And which is?
JICDA.
And then JIC is called Student Contact?
Right.
So the only difference between that and this is code of.
Make them more. I think we had four thumbs.
Okay, great. I'm just looking at the other policy too. Great. Any other feedback from the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, I just want to reiterate to the community that is watching. This year, the board specifically, over the last six months with the new board being seated, the emphasis was based on the feedback that we got from staff and teachers to put the focus on student attendance, student behavior in the classrooms. And the cellphone policy goes along with that. The focus of the board has been in improving student academic outcomes. And Superintendent Goll always talks about the classroom environment, the high-quality instruction being necessary to improve student achievement in the classroom. And when the classroom instruction is being interrupted by student contact or student behavior and it is not being addressed in a consistent manner, then that is not conducive to a learning environment that we want to see. So this is protecting the sanctity of the learning environment. So irrespective of what policies are put into place, the action of this isn't the implementation plan that Superintendent Goll is going to come with. And then there is going to be a consistency in this being implemented at all levels in our school. So we look forward to the implementation plan that is going to come from the superintendent, the regulations that may be attached with this at a certain point in time, and looking forward to how this will play out in our school. forward to how this will play out in our school environments, and also periodic monitoring reports to the board on that. Thank you, Superintendent Gall. And all these items moving to consent at the next board meeting? Is that okay, moving all of this to consent? Okay. Moving on to the next item on the non-action agenda, naming of Jack Swigert Aerospace Academy and Galileo School of Math and Science. Superintendent Gall?
Can I get Ms. Otmer and Dr. Wise, and please acknowledge the community members that I saw walk in for the work session who helped with this process. I see Marion and Velvet here as well.
Absolutely. Good evening, Board. As you'll recall, when we brought academic master plan updates a little while back for middle school pathway designations, we discussed the option of bringing new names forward for Jack Swigert Aerospace Academy and Galileo School of Math and Science. Dr. Wise and I followed policy F F to convene committees and go through the different steps within that policy in order to bring this proposal forward tonight. We did gather the community feedback required in that. We also heard from the Office of Enrollment, parent feedback, and within the academic master plan, how having specific school designations within the formal school name limits the possibility to serve the school community best. As we pulled that committee forward, we followed all of the rules in F F, and the two proposals that come forward tonight are Jack Swigert Middle School and Galileo Middle School. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wise to go into who was on that committee. Again, we are thanking the people who are in the room tonight. Velvet, as a DAC representative, was one of the people in the room, and we all, as a member at large. And we also had, I'm looking behind me, I think Velvet's the only one here that was from the DAC representative, but we didn't have another member as well.
Good evening, Board. So, I just want to give you some updates on how the committee meetings went and the community meetings, and what we learned from the group, and how we got to consensus. So, on the evening of Tuesday, May fourteenth, we gathered a group that you see here. You can, we've removed the names, but you can see their roles and who they were supporting. We did Galileo and Swigert together. There was a lot of shared interest from the community in both names. With the people that we were able to gather, we were able to meet the requirements of policy F F. Of course, there's always a desire that more people come, but we were able to get where we needed to. And we had a lengthy discussion about each school and their name, and were able to come up to unanimous consensus to move forward out of those committee meetings. As you'll see in just a second, there were a lot of shared themes about both schools that kind of illuminated the reasons why this change is coming forward. So, just to start, shared themes. For Galileo Middle School, we heard a lot of parent feedback about how they're unsure whether or not math and science is the right fit for their child, so they might not consider Galileo as a school, because they think their child might not belong or might not succeed. For Swigert, resoundingly, the feedback was kind of the opposite, the inversion, that they got really excited about Aerospace Academy and then felt a little bit of a bait and switch when they got there, and that wasn't necessarily the programming that was happening. Feedback to principals from staff, community, parents is very similar. Just to highlight the staff part of it, Galileo potential staff who would apply, thinking, I'm not sure I can cut it at a math and science school, and therefore pivoting in another direction. And then, again, Swigert, the opposite of being really excited to teach at an aerospace academy, learning that that's not really what was being asked of them, and then being disappointed in that way. So, the overall general feedback from both schools is that the names were setting them up for disappointment on one side or the other, and limiting. For Jack Swigert, just to highlight a couple of other things, one thing that was resounding from the committee is that Jack Swigert needed to stay. It's connection to Colorado history and the excitement that that brings to the school is something that everyone felt very passionate about. Also, the acknowledgement that they may not be living up to the name Aerospace Academy currently, but it leaves room for the potential to get back there if that's what the school community chooses by having Jack Swigert as a designation. Other people noted, everyone calls it Swigert anyway, and drops a lot of the in names, so that's totally fine, but we must keep the Jack in the name. And then, there was also a lot of discussion around the fact that everyone in the Swigert community can see that the school might be moving in other directions, and Aerospace Academy could be limiting to that vision. And they really need to spend some time thinking about what the community wants and not limiting themselves. So, after that committee discussion, we then opened it up to a community meeting for Swigert on May twenty-third, and we got very similar feedback from there as well, an emphasis to keep the Jack Swigert legacy, but no concerns about the aerospace. Galileo, our discussion around Galileo, similar to a lot of the things we've already mentioned with parent and staff feedback, that math and science feels limiting and misrepresentative of what's going on at the school, and it can be very confusing to enrolling students, to potential parents, to potential staff members, and they feel like that's something they really want to correct. One of the interesting conversations we had about Galileo was, should it go back to East? People have noted that's something that some still call it East, because they haven't quite gotten used to Galileo, but the committee eventually came to the fact that they feel very confident in the positive trajectory that Galileo is on, and how it's, and the name being associated with that, and the need not to move backwards in time, but instead to continue this positive forward trajectory with Galileo. There was also some comments that perhaps Galileo itself is still reminiscent of math and science, but again, like Jack Swigert, no problem with that. It's just the actual math and science moniker. So, and then again, we had an open community meeting on May twenty-second, and very similar feedback supporting the dropping of math and science in order to open the opportunity for Galileo to be what it needs to be. So, from both committees, we had unanimous consensus. We then opened both to the community meetings. As I mentioned, we only got reinforcement of those naming opportunities. And that's where we are, what we're bringing tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback and putting all these committee and groups together in short order and bringing this to the board. Comments, questions from the board on this? Okay. Director.
Thank you. Just, I'm just curious if, maybe you did say this in the very beginning, what was the parent turnout or family engagement response on this? I mean, was it two or?
We had a couple of parents for each school, and then we, for the community, for the committee, for the community meetings, we blasted it out to the school and all of their feeder-pattern schools. So, anyone who might have been or will be part of those committees, we sent out. And then, we had open WebEx community meetings, and we had a few participants each.
Just a few?
Mm-hmm. Just a few.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. We can blast out and ask for community to participate in, but we can't control who can participate in those committees. But I'm glad that you reached out and asked for people to come and participate. And it's not, all this is, the primary name of the school still remains the same, Jack Swigert and Galileo. Seeing no further comments or questions from the board, is the board comfortable moving this to consent? Director.
Thank you. It's a, it's a really pretty basic change, and I don't see any problem with it, but personally, I just soon see it on action. It's, it's a name change.
We'll leave it as action, because any board member can pull it from consent to action anyway, so we'll leave it as action and come back to it. Moving to the next item on the non-action agenda, which is the proposed board meeting dates for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Per the Board of Education operating manual, from time to time, the board shall take action to establish a schedule of regular meetings. This is done annually. And, Ms. Olson, are you going to pull up, yeah, that's the document. So, this is the current Board of Education meeting dates for twenty-four, twenty-five, and there is a board policy, B E, that is associated with this meeting dates. And Director Carey, at some point in time, I think in a previous meeting, you referenced that policy, B E. That policy, B E, hasn't been revised yet, and so we are following what is there in policy, B E, while crafting this dates. Certainly, that can be a topic of conversation at the board retreat next week. And if necessary, based on that conversation that happens at the retreat, this can be changed before it comes as an action at the following meeting. Okay. There was, yeah, we'll wait till the board retreat for that discussion. Any thoughts or questions? I thank Ms. Olson in putting this together. Currently, we have work sessions on the first and third, first and third Wednesdays as it is, and the second and fourth Wednesdays are the board meeting days, and the fifth Wednesday is always left out as an optional day. Okay. Director.
Thank you. I noticed January eighth was as soon as a regular meeting instead of a work session.
January eighth?
Right-hand column, second grouping. I was curious if that was intentional and what the reason was.
Well, I think January eighth is the second Wednesday, I think, January first being the first Wednesday.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, you're just noting that?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So, January eighth and January twenty-second, January twenty-ninth would be the fifth Wednesday.
That's true. So, maybe we should note that that's the fifth Wednesday. And certainly, we can have all those meetings. That's fine. What? Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments on this? Okay, this will come as an action item two weeks from now with the possible discussions at the board retreat on June fifth and possible revisions to it based on that discussion. Moving on to the last item on the agenda, non-action item, DAC chair and Wise chair appointments. In order for the DAC to continue operations optimally prior to the start of fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, the board must review and approve this information annually in the spring, which is what we are doing at this point in time. And if you can open up that proposed DAC membership and charge, and we do have, Marion, are you going to come and talk about this to the board? I think, yeah, you can just update the board as to the process that happened and who the vice chair and the chair are going to be for the next academic year.
Okay. Good evening. I wasn't really prepared to talk to this. I think we just need you to approve the chair and vice chair, and then we'll come back to you with an updated list of members in, in the fall, because sometimes things just change a little when people come back out of the summer, and so we want the most up-to-date list for you in October.
Okay. And the charges are also for a future point in time. It's not that. But if you can update the board on who the chair and the vice chair are going to be for next year.
Okay. The, the chair is going to be me, Marion Claussen, and the vice chair is Lauren Walker.
So, there is no change from this year to next year?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you. And that went through the DAC process?
Yeah, we voted, and it was unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Board, any thoughts or questions on this? Okay. Seeing none, can this be moved to consent item? Okay, go ahead. And just while you are here, I don't know if you're going to be there on June twelfth. Thank you for your service on, on the DAC. Thank you. And we look forward to the work session that's following this, where you are going to be providing the end-of-the-year report. The DAC is going to be providing the end-of-the-year report. Moving on, future agenda item tasks, request for new agenda items from the board, knowing that we are at the end of the academic year with currently two board meetings left. Director, you're concerned?
There is a policy in the I Series around instruction on flag ceremonies and flag policy, I M, I M D. And I emailed our, my board members today before the meeting, just to let them know that I would be bringing this up as something to be edited and updated before the next school year. So, with consensus of my fellow board members, I would appreciate just a quick review of that policy and edit it along its way to have it prepared for next school year.
Can you repeat that policy number again, or the alphabet soup? I M D. Okay, got it. I M D. Is that, do you have a timeline on when you're bringing it, Director Chugginsen?
I emailed the board today.
Oh, you did.
So, you have a copy of my proposed edits. So, if that's what you, if we have consensus, you want to load that into, I mean, it's a one-page policy.
Okay.
So, just more about the display of flags and, and how we're honoring America's history with the American flag and all that. So, very brief edits.
Okay. If necessary, we can talk about it next week at the board retreat.
Yeah, I think, I think it would take five minutes.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. Any other requests from the board?
Do you want consensus?
Thumbs to? Oh, at the board retreat? Okay.
Anywhere.
Do we have thumbs to discuss this first at the board retreat? It usually comes at a work session. We don't have a work session coming at the board retreat and then possibly coming to the work session at that. Okay, we got, okay, discuss it at the board retreat.
Jill's got one up there, too.
Yeah. So, we will discuss this at the board retreat, and then, based on that discussion, it can come to possibly June twelfth meeting, and we can, if necessary, move it from non-action to action at the same board meeting. Calendar review. So, the board is aware, June fifth is the board retreat, and June twelfth is the regular board meeting. We don't have any other meetings on schedule after June twelfth. That will currently be the last meeting of the school year. With that, seeing no further business, and if there are no objections, this meeting will adjourn. We will officially adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-two P M.
And we have two items on the agenda today, one being the DAC end-of-the-year report that is coming to the board. Marion Claussen, the DAC chair, is joining us, and there are several other DAC committee members joining us, and they can introduce themselves too. And Marion requested, I think she had some conflict of interest later on with the other dates, so she requested that she present the end-of-the-year report at this meeting. So, we were able to accommodate her. So, with further, no further, we'll go directly to Marion. Marion, welcome. Let's start with the introductions first, and then we can come to the end-of-the-year reports, and then we can open it up for board discussion. Go ahead.
All right. I think they can introduce themselves.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Lauren Blazes Walker. I'm the vice chair of the DAC in, in charge of membership.
I'm Velvet Stepanek. I'm the chair of the SAC, the, the DAC SAC Training and Supporting Subcommittee, and then also the Charter School Review.
Andy Huber, Chair of the Budget Subcommittee.
We also have Lyman Kaiser, who's been serving on the DAC for several years in several capacities. Okay, we'll come to you first. You can present the end-of-the-year reports, your takeaway from this year overall, and then open it up for board discussion.
All right. Thank you for having us. And I want to take a moment to thank all the volunteers on our DAC and our SAC, because there are a lot of them, and it's all volunteers. Most of us are parents first, so we're putting our time in there and doing this. And I also, since we're thanking volunteers, I want to thank the board, because you are also volunteers. So just more officially, so thank you for that. And I also wanted to thank the district team because working with an accountability committee is not always easy and we're a tough bunch to present to, so we're really grateful for the work and that we're really felt like we worked through a lot of things this year and we're successful. And I think the report, I did not think we go through the entire report because it's a large report and I feel like we have really fulfilled our charges this year. We have put everything in that we should have been doing. And I wanted to focus today just a little bit on the recommendations and on the two additional proposed charges, just as a item food of thought. Because we're not, as I said a little bit earlier, we're, the charges are not officially due until October. So that's the the big piece about it. Um, so one of the things, sorry, we wanted to talk about in the recommendation is we recommended that the district, a little bit more of a of a push to family engagement. So we're really happy as a DAC with the direction the district is moving. And we're also really feel like we appreciate that the board priorities are really helping guiding the work of the district. So we really appreciate that as well. And we welcome the ideas that are coming forward in the district regarding engagement. And we really wanna support the ask to integrate family and community engagement in all aspects of the district and in all the departments. So we acknowledge that the intention for this work has always been there and over the years and that a lot of work successfully has been done in pockets. And many promising practices have been developed. And I mean, you see those in the spotlights that are presented or in the last couple years have been presented. And so there's really good work happening, but we notice that it doesn't make a system-wide difference. There is no overarching plan and we don't really see dedicated resources to the efforts. So while we respect the commitment to access high-quality instructions and we're fully supporting this, to reach the goal of student achievement, there's lots of research that shows that involved families are really gonna help boost student achievement and positively influence attendance, the rise graduation rates, lower dropout rates, and also increase staff satisfaction and staff retention. So really, it's work that is well worth doing. And we want to recommend that the district takes this as a system-wide challenge, that every department is involved and the resources will be provided to support a plan that includes professional development. So we would like to see a long-term systemic plan, clear existing plans for schools as well. And we feel like there's a little bit of a mindset that needs to open up and change across the whole district. And yeah, we feel that it falls really in line also with the board priorities to have this work, this plan. All right, shall I take a breath? Do you have any questions to that part?
Jason.
The mindset change you speak of, what would that look like? What what are your thoughts on that?
So the thought of this is that when we often think about family engagement, we talk about attendance of parent-teacher conferences or parents coming to school performances. But it needs to be bigger than this, it needs to be more inclusive. And there is, it's almost like this is a traditional way of doing things, but there's another way of expanding this.
Any further ideas on that?
Anything about some of the specifics of what you'd like to see? I think you were looking at just what specifically would it look like? Like, how would you know your meeting that those measures for and and?
Well, it's it's changing the mindset of of all staff too, right? Like, when you talk about family engagement, when someone asks, they talk about an event. That's part of it, right? Just like she said. But it has to do with reaching out to families to support students, right? So I mean, part of the charges of SACs is to talk about replans, right? ICAPS, what are we doing to get families to know about those things to be able to help student success? So and even home visits, all those things are part of family engagement, but people don't think of it that way. So it's it's trying to shift your mind about how it is already part of your work. It's not necessarily additional work. I mean, but it's it's not just events, right? It's it's the like she was talking about systemic things. And and I think some of it has to do, like, with professional development, like she was saying. You know, we we think, talk about it, elementary schools, a lot of times, elementary school student teachers are really good. Like, the kindergarten teacher class I help in, she's really good because she has to be able to communicate with families. But how are we getting better at, you know, in the, like, today, we're talking with one plan things at the high school level. I'm like, what can we do to teach families to know about these things so that they can help their kids make choices, right? That's family engagement too, and so putting in supports to do that.
I think it would, like, every school having a SAC, every school having, you know, improved scores on that part of the survey where they're indicating that they know what's happening at their student's school, they're indicating that they know how to support their their student at their school. And, you know, parents being more engaged in that too. You know, we we wanna see is parents taking on responsibility for assisting their learners. And we wanna see, you know, schools helping to facilitate that even further than what they've been doing. You know, just continuing to improve that process.
I think that's can, like, one of the concerns that Director Nelson discovered last week and that I've mentioned before is, do our parents really know where their students are at with their STAR assessment, with their CMAS, with their, you know, PSATs? Are are they really aware that it's in their face of, hey, your student does not meet, and here's how you can support them? And are we getting that actual level of engagement versus just come to the art night, come to the steam night? And so I I like where you're going with that.
And some of the schools are really selling at that, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, obviously, success.
It's their conversation, so we're we're expecting the teachers to ha- be able to have these conversations with parents, but they're not really being trained in it. At the elementary school level, it's much easier because it's all warm and fuzzy kind of thing. But and it comes to the secondary school level, it's a lot about like crisis that when you have contact with a teacher or with admin. And it very, not as much about the rest of it, or even engaging together in student learning. Like, what does it mean and how can I support you? Then teachers feel like, if you look at five E data, teachers feel like their parents are not supportive towards them. And the parents feel like they don't get information. And that's a a part of this.
Yeah.
And it's not even only by teachers, right? I mean, it could be at the school level, like we were talking today, like, maybe next year, we have school links. Maybe we have some parents who get trained on how to do school links. And then we provide training to parents to come in so that you're not putting more on staff, right? But but then, so like she was talking about school accountability committees or PT, like, having parents help do some of that too. And I mean, it's it's not always, there are some parents who don't have the time to come in, right? But it's giving, you're talking about, it's not just that, but, I mean, giving them information about how to support their kids. You know, I mean, messages and things, little.
And framing it in the language that works for parents. Because that's often, and then, as someone who comes from a different country and still tries to figure out how school in America works, as I'm growing with my kid through the process, I it's confusing. So and then I feel like, what what is it, how confusing was this many years for for me before when my language skills weren't quite there? And then understanding when someone throws like standards at you or certain things, you don't know what they're talking about. So putting it into understanding in easier-understand language. So one of the things the district currently is doing is, for example, is the the attendance suite that we're doing. And they're sending out attendance report at the schools that are doing this pilot program right now. And they're telling you, if your kid attendance might be ninety percent, but you're missing ten days of instructions, that puts you at risk of falling behind. And putting it in a different language for parents to see, okay, my ninety percent might look good on paper, but actually, my kid misses valuable time. So that I feel like this kind of connection is important in this piece too.
Okay.
And I do like what Velvet brought up, whether parents can come in or not, because I do. I don't make it to all of my kids' schools equally. So it's nice to have different ways of being able to communicate with school, whether it's I follow up on the emails or we follow up, you know, by communicating with the teachers or we get involved in the neighborhood events that are going on. I think a lot of things are still happening person to person and making sure we're doing our best to support all the ways in which parents communicate with each other and parents communicate with their students in their schools.
We we would love to see in the next, beginning of this entire next school year, that like, how are we expecting our families to be engaged in communication? We're still, we're hoping for a two-way communication tool that does it all. Apparently, I don't know if that's even possible. But like, how, what are you, even making a plan of what you use when and where and what gives you the information that you need? And that's different, works differently at different school levels. And I know there's work to be done, and it's already happening. But we're still, we're still, we're hoping for a one-size-fits-all tool. But I'm not sure if that exists, maybe someone can develop one.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you really for the feedback and uh, family, parent engagement is critical. We have emphasized that in the time that I was on the DAC and now on the board, it's always, we welcome that. Several of our schools have community liaisons that they go over and beyond just the events. They engage with the community, try to figure out the needs of that particular community and meet that. And in the past year, year and a half, we've also have at least two, possibly now three Spanish-speaking language coordinators. They are always present at various district events to engage our Hispanic community too. So we take your feedback and see how we can improve on that the next year.
As as part of this is also, we wanted the board to also make sure that that you're supporting us a little bit in having a SAC chair in every school and that we want parents to be at the SAC chair. So we need a little bit of like coming together and making this push together in this. And we'll also feel like that sometimes it happens that there is a possibility to have a parent SAC chair, but the flexibility to accommodate that parent is not there. So we really want that, if that is a priority from the board as well, that you want parents as SAC chairs, I think we can ask a little bit more for that flexibility. And also, when we're looking at like school websites, we would love information to be more easily to be found for families and a little bit more of a consistent look to things. Like, not that your SAC information currently is hidden at some schools, it's under about us and others, it's under community and others, it's under families, it's all over the place. So it would be good if that, if those tabs would be a little bit more cohesive and so you know where to go.
How how many schools did not have a SAC this year, do you know?
I believe it was like five, and then we had several that had like district, that a couple that had district members as their SAC.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So share that information with, I don't know, actually, if it is not on the.
Yes. And it's in the report where I'm saying, we have, we have reached out to principals, we have reached, we have tried to work on on this. And sometimes we'll offer support and we don't hear back from it or we're reaching out and at once in a while, we don't get an answer. And then we're getting better at asking for it, but not everybody takes us up on the offers that we're that we're extending. So we wanna always think about how can we do better and how can we be more proactive or active in that role of supporting the schools? But the schools need to say, yeah, come and help us. We that, we need that coming back to us too.
It is hard when the volunteers kind of reach out and and I think, oh, these people do it a lot more than I do, but to reach out and say, we're we're trying to help you, and sometimes they don't always get direct response. You know, you know, they're just, they're trying to do what they can do to support all of the schools in development.
One big ask we have, or idea we have, and we presented this, you might have heard this throughout the year, is we would like to have a student representative added to the DAC. And so that is an ask that came from a student who says, like, I feel like I'm sitting in the room with you guys and it's adults making decisions on kids and the student voice is not being a part of it. And I said, okay, let's see if we can figure this out. And the idea is to have two students because then the students can mentor each other. So we want to add two student representatives that are not graduating in the same year. So they have the transition, one goes off, the next one comes in. And so they can help each other out and also because students are busy and maybe not, they cannot, both of them can attend all the time, but one of them can at least always be there at at our meetings. And what we want from the students and what they want is, they wanna capture the student voice and how they, how the idea is to use social media for that and also like for for getting information out, but also short surveys. And so those, what we, what their idea was is to add like quick little surveys to send to the students and ask them about things and so they can represent that back. The district has a policy on surveys, but that is more geared towards like if a university wants to come in and do a huge study or something like this. But we are not asking for that. We are asking simply for our student to be able to do like a quick question, two or three, something like this. Um, once we ask for this doing, being done district-wide, we hit this barrier with the policy that then makes it such a large amount of work that it's not, that is too complicated to do. So we're still trying to see how we can, how the students can do that to capture more student voice. And that was one of the ideas that came up. And we do need a little bit of the board's support, otherwise, we're stuck at that policy. So kind of like make an exception for them to have that.
So that is a process and place for student surveys?
No, we have a research policy on how it is that we allow access to staff and or students to collect data. David's cleared out for the night, but this is, it's a policy, I forget which number and alphabet soup it is, but it's a, it's a very tight policy that people can't just ask their eight friends to get what they want to then say, eight out of ten students said. So we are certainly open to student voice. That was presented, I think, at the last work session from the Student Sounding Board with some recommendations going forward. But I would not recommend loosening the policy because then we then just become a bullseye for anybody who wants to make a point on whatever point they wanna make. It's a clear process, it's rigorous, and we do have tons of partnerships with outside research agencies and institutions that we make ourselves available for. We have many doctoral students that are on our staff that use that policy to be able to get the survey and the research information that they need to have them the credibility for that.
So if students like what Marion is asking want to put out a survey, they would go through that same policy process?
Yeah, it goes through that policy.
Yeah.
So it's about randomization, it's about statistical relevancy, it's about whether or not there's enough of a sample size to actually have correlation, all these things that we pay Dr. Colicky to be smart on, but to make sure that we don't get eight out of ten kids said, and we have an opinion.
So you work with Dr. Colicky, a feedback would be that coordinate with them and the students and see if you can come to a process which is statistically relevant.
We can, we can definitely have a conversation about it. It's just, I, is this the same thing than having, maybe we need to word it, do different words in order to nominate the the ask that the student representatives have in that, in in what they wanna do. Because it's not like when we we see like the survey that was done on the block schedule, for example, there is a much larger piece than what they had in mind, that is. There is a much larger piece than what they had in mind. Mu- that is a much bigger picture piece. So I think we need to have, we we could talk about this and see how we can come back with a better wording for what
And I think one of the things that uh I Ms. Artner has also left, I think for the night, but you are going through a design thinking process
Mm-hmm.
in the next few weeks, um as far as the committee process itself, maybe this could be brought up as a discussion point out there.
Mm-hmm.
And then as far as there are two students serving on the committee itself, you have two students, as far as I understand, the last.
Yeah, we're we're currently have, so we had a trial student for this year with Marissa. And um then we have a second student that we're adding on, that's who is willing to serve in that role.
Okay.
So and they're from different schools, so we wanna make sure we have different schools representative in that. Um and so when it comes to how do we work with the board and so I just wanna make sure. So the the DAC only is a couple committees. So we're the full DAC, we're the budget subcommittee accreditation, we're the charter school committee, which is an ad hoc committee that only serves when it's needed. And then we have the SAC training and support committee. Those are our only committees. We're not responsible for any other committees that are out there. They are not part, they are not, I would say like they're not mine. They're someone else's. Mine are only the the full DAC, the budget accreditation and the training and subcommittee. Those are ours. And when we go in this design thinking process, I feel like we can talk about it. We have clear charges from the board, we have clear bylaws, we're rooted in policy. So these are ours. But we're presenting um recommendations and reports to the board. And we feel like when we do that, the board's feedback is always positive, that you appreciate the work that the that the DAC is doing and the reports that you're getting are perceived at being as being helpful. Um so we wanted to put this out to you, and you don't have to answer this today. It's like, are there any other reports in addition to the ones mentioned um that you would find helpful in your work? What could you think like this would be great if the DAC could take a look at this or send us feedback on this? So this year we come, sometimes we struggled a little bit in like accreditation when we were reviewing data sets and the presentation to the board was already has already happened. We felt like why should I send a report to the board? They already talked about it. Unless we found something that was completely different than what was presented to you. But at the same time, we feel like as a DAC, we have the volunteers and that are willing to do the work to look at a complete data set. So that what you guys then get as presented is truly not missing anything. And we're able to to look at the bigger picture then, because it's a lot of work. And so we wanna support you in that work.
I would I would say like additional or ways to condense things that you think are uh for me, maybe just me personally, like there's things that you think could be done together as one incident. Uh not like various committees, but just if there's like ways to make things more effective for you all. And we're just looking for a little bit of feedback on maybe what you all are expecting or wanting or desiring. Uh just kind of one opportunity we get to all together, say hey.
Jason.
Uh.
I think yours.
You're already on it with the family engagement. I think that that's the a big push that uh we see ne- necess- necessary in meeting these board priorities that are just uh not there. So um that's been our constant discussion, I think of how do we get more families involved in their in their students' education and how do we foster that engagement and across the district? So I think you're on track.
Sounds like happy like the the quantity and the quality of the reports then.
Yes, I think you're on track. Uh I'd like to support you.
I I will say I am curious to see what comes out of the design thinking lab, like I think there could be things we could do a little differently. I just don't have the ideas tonight, so saying we love that stuff.
Well, and you have to make sure, like there are state mandated things that we have to do as a as a committee. So um that whether how it how it's done, I mean, you know, not every not every district has subcommittees that do the work. The full DAC may do all that work, but it's all that work still has to be done that's mandated by the state.
So I think we will probably answer your question, like get back to you, like if there's other reports or we'll think about it and then see also what you guys come out with that design thinking lab, if you have suggestions.
Okay.
So the beginning of the year, we should get an update on after that design thinking lab takes place, we will get an update as a board probably in a work session. And maybe you can come back at that work session to provide your feedback with that point.
Yeah, happy to. And um we're also like wherever we're the charges, we have usually have another work session with you before the charges then go through the process of the approval process. So there's another opportunity for all of us to to narrow this down and and really um agree on what we put on paper.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Let's figure out a time, maybe at a work session collectively, we can have the design thinking process feedback and also the charges coming in front of the board. All in maybe in middle of September or something like that.
And I'll say I am participating in that design thinking lab and so maybe at the retreat if board members or offline if you have anything that you would like from the board perspective to go into that. Please, I'd be happy to to represent that.
We're also, one of the things that we're have talked about is so we do see board members coming, attending willing willingly in our our meetings. Um but the question is, does the board want like a liaison kind of thing? Or say someone who says like, I am committing to um attending um these meetings. I know that um um Ms. Elton, as the treasurer, goes to the budget subcommittee. But um and we know that um President Alpakam comes to the DAC pretty much every meeting this year, I think you've maybe missed one?
I don't, I might have missed a couple.
Yeah, I think barely. But yeah, so you you're always there and then we have frequently other board members that come to this. And we used to see a lot of members pop into accreditation as well, and we didn't see this this year. And we were wondering, or we also thought about maybe someone wants to be part of the training and support committee and listen into that and maybe um so they know what the work is and what we're doing and what we're working on. But that is a decision you as a board need to make if you want to send someone specifically to us.
Yeah, we can certainly talk about that at the board retreat that we are having next week and we'll follow back with you.
Um the last charge that I put on and it's like it I worded and and the wording is of course not. It's like support the board in monitoring and evaluating the implementation and effectiveness of policy regulations. I know that's a kind of like feels like a hot topic right now a little bit, but because it's so much of this is like what is um it's like how is this process going and how are things doing and part of it are our charges anyway. So we just feel like how can we collaborate with the board in this process? So we want, and maybe that's part of the design thinking coming back from that. But I wanted to put it on you guys' radar, that's why I put it in the report.
Okay. That's part of what you're asking us charges for next year.
Yeah, and
And then it's time to discuss that. Um this is at least on the board's radar, what you made that request. And we'll go through that design thinking lab and come out of it. And uh before um we formally adopt the DAC membership and the charges, we will certainly have that discussion at the work session at the beginning of the school year.
That's what all I had.
Thanks.
Got it. That we made it through mine.
Yes.
Did it. Did you have anything?
Any of you uh have any additional thoughts or comments uh from you as the budget chair?
Yeah, yeah, I think we need to find a way to get some of these meetings to be a little bit more condensed. It would really be nice to. I mean, I think our budget com- committee meetings, we keep them really really tight and lined up. So I think like for me, it's just like how do we get the most amount of work done and the least amount of time? And are there more effective ways that we could be communicating with the community? Um I know that you've had some suggestions in the past, other people in my community have had suggestions in the past for how to bring some more um parent feedback and other feedback into things. I I'm open to all the suggestions.
Amanda, it's really hard to hear you.
Good.
Little louder.
Uh just how to bring in uh you know, an effective way to bring in parent uh you know, feedback communication. We always wanna be open to the public, but how to get all of these things done in a way that's respectful of people's time? I think that that's my maybe just personal goal, um but I think it's an organizational goal as well, like how to how do we get things done effectively? So I'm really looking forward to talking uh with Nicole Otmer and others and seeing what their suggestions may be. 'Cause we don't wanna take up, we we wanna be the the most effective that we can in what we do um and be the most helpful to you all that we can be. So getting as much feedback from you as we can. And then um just having things kind of move along is is really important um to I think all of the so all of the committees.
Great. When you find the answer to the question, come and share it with me as well.
There's there's enough people here. I think I think they should be able, we should be able to figure it out.
The the rule is don't let me breathe, 'cause then you'll go over.
You have been very, very good.
I'm keeping to your timeline, Mary. Thank you.
I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you guys, thank you.
I have a few.
So I did
You have, okay, better than I was too.
Yeah, would would childcare assist, do you think? Um I mean, I don't know how much budget we have that we put toward DAC and and we need the volunteers to show up. But um I'm guessing that none of you have the youngest of children and so I'm sorry.
Why you made that statement?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I didn't tell that one, I just
Because that you are able to, you know, to be here again. And I know that some of our board members have very young children, but
Well, we are able to, we had offered childcare at some point, correct?
Well, and and our DAC meetings, we have hybrid meetings. So like we have young parent, we have some representatives who have young kids.
Mm-kay.
And if they can't, they they join from home, right? I mean, so we've tried to stay flexible with some of that SAC training and support. We do provide childcare. Um you know, there are always options for for differences.
Trudy has emailed out that if people have requests for childcare, that they can respond to her.
Okay.
Um so we communicate that way.
I I think currently either Lauren or apparently probably the youngest on the budget subcommittee, wouldn't take a guess. Um but we would love to see younger parents interested and if they wanted that, um I'll have one of my kids come and we can we can figure that out.
And send, I mean, as you're in the community and the schools, send people our way. We will have a lot of vacancy this year.
Yes. So and we're always a parent engaged.
On the DAC. So we, it's parent, not community. We have lots of community, but we we are going to meet parent and then admin. So middle school and high school admins, um but we have lots of slots available if people are interested.
Okay.
And the best way to advertise that is
Through the superintendent, I think.
Well, I'm guessing they're not gonna come in to you.
Well
There are committees.
No, we do
Well, what I would uh
But but that you do are miswires.
Well, um usually the building principals are the most effective resource in that
Yeah.
Yeah.
reaching out to the parent community. They know the parent community, they know the engaged parents that will want to serve other school leaders.
I think you can add a section to the newsletter in the board's conversation with AdPro of you know, parent supports, parent involvement, community involvement, and ways to input. Um because I appreciate it, I think, Amanda, did you say it? Um the committee's worked for you.
Yeah.
So our resources are going to be available, but this is your relationship. You all have a specific newsletter and communication strategy now that um a principal is damned if they do and damned if they don't. You know, they're trying as hard as they can to meet the work of the district. They're not not wanting a SAC. They're just like, somebody comes in and wants to be on the SAC, great, you're the SAC chair. They they just, they want that engagement as well. And so putting that back down on the school or on the administration won't solve the problem. The way to break that is, let's take the new thing that we're doing, which is you're communicating communicating directly with the community. And let's create a box or a corner or once a month, a community inputs needed. And we'll give you a let's talk button on it if people want Q and A to answer or ways for you to engage directly with the extension of these committees. That doesn't feel, 'cause I think if I were a parent that were maybe not satisfied, I'm like, I don't know, like I already don't have a good relationship with the principal. And now I'm gonna be on the SAC and then it's like, I think sometimes when we ask the administration to solve the engagement strategy alone, we're 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 only getting the echo chamber of either the person that really likes it or the person that doesn't really like it. And and they and that's where it seems like the extreme falls.
I would also say though that the principal needs, I mean, most of the time, I mean, Parth can attest to this, knowing a principal that asks you to be the SAC chair, right? And really, for the DAC members, it needs, it should be someone who is experienced for SAC. I mean, a lot of districts, like every SAC chair is supposed to be part, can be part of the DAC. We don't do that in D eleven. We did it one time and we changed. So I mean, it really, we we need to reach out to SAC chairs. And and it would be great for you to reach out too, but it's not like asking a new parent who's never served on a SAC to be on the DAC.
Right.
You need some background. Um I would just say that I would ask you that maybe you need to reach out to get more people in the mill of the override oversight committee as well too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I I I think at some point we're overtaxing our community. And so I understand why we have a mill levy oversight committee, because that is separate than our annual budget. But there seems to be like we barely have enough people in the DAC budget subcommittee. And so although it's a different budget, why do we have to have, how was it, eighteen people, seventeen people?
Twenty-three.
How many?
It was twenty-three.
Tw- twenty-three people. Like we barely have twenty-three SACS. And we want twenty-three people to be on the mill levy override oversight committee.
I just want maybe eight to nine, like I mean
Right, so let let's bring that to the mill levy oversight committee and say, are there ways that as long as not a majority is represented by the DAC bu- budget subcommittee, can people wear two hats? And and then and can we can meet those meetings at the same time? I mean, my staff, I mean, first of all, we we love the relationships, but my staff spends an inordinate amount of time, after hours supporting committees. Brandon over there represents, how many different committees?
A few.
A few, right? And so
Two of mine.
I I think this idea of of serving SACS, being on the DAC, mill levy oversight committee, also having the chance to be on the DAC but subcommittee. I think then we we might get more response if we stop asking for so many. Twenty-three is is ridiculous. Twenty-three people on one committee? That that that's not a committee, that's a posse.
Well, yeah.
Just to, that's not my committee. I just wanna say, that's not mine.
Just to give you some
Not your committee?
Just to give you some history on that, there were eighty people that initially applied after the uh that Rott cannot test to it. Uh when the twenty-seventeen MLO passed, there were eighty people that applied for it.
Right. Mm-hmm.
And then it got called down to twenty-three, but interest has gone away from it uh at this point in time. Now getting eight people in there is a tall order, so.
It would also be valuable to have, again, this drama, keep needing more diversity um on these committees and some of that will take dedicated asks.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And that's
And I can tell you, those asks coming from us go nowhere.
And and that's where we need a little bit of help from the principals, knowing their community. And we're happy to come in. We have done a couple of those this year where we were at schools and supporting schools. But we were most certainly are willing to do more of that. And a personal invite goes a really long way. And even if it's a board member that goes to a school and you visit schools all the time, if you meet a parent to ask them, hey, are you serving at your school SAC? You seem to be interested in your school. What, your voice would be valuable. So coming from you as well would be helpful too. So and and it's the same like when I was recruiting administrators last year, I asked literally administrators, hey, if you can do it, what about your fellow administrators that you work with at your school level? Do you know someone who might be interested? And then I reached out from there and used that little bit of a snowball effect until I finally found someone who said yes. So it's because you're right, everybody is busy and it's an extra engagement after hours. And it's being on the DAC is not paid, it's not part of their job.
If my, I I appreciate what you're saying too about us being in schools, because we absolutely should be able to do that. And that might, I I get to, I mean, I know some of you serve on multiple committees, so same people. And that is amazing and appreciated and necessary, but hopefully yes, some additional folks.
Like ideally, there wouldn't be, you know, five of us in the same room over and over and over again. And you would see like a lot more people, get to know a lot more of the district, I think, would be the the love of all of us, right? We would really love that. It's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh Dr. Hayfley, you had a comment?
Actually, I'd like to
Actually, it's fun to them, if, if it would help at all, just brainstorming here, if a member of the DAC and a member of the board went together to different schools' staff meetings, and asked the staff there, you can hit everybody at once, and maybe somebody will um say, yep, that's me, I wanna be a part of that, and that way you have you know, collaboration there between the staff and the board and the committees, and then the people see how important, just how important those committees are, and if we just get maybe one per school, that would be nice, just an idea.
Thank you.
Thanks, Director. Superintendent, comment?
Of all the directors, I don't, I don't wanna cut a director off.
Okay.
Um I super appreciate the detail in the yearly report, it gives my team and our own strategy a lot of focus to make sure that we are reaching our parents, uh to remind everybody that our major improvement strategy number two, that we use in our unit district improvement plan, and then is down-selected in every one of our school improvement plans, is focused on engagement and culture. Um we are now very active in that space, in the first year, we were all in on major improvement strategy one, not lying anybody about it. This first year and, and hiring Dr. Wise to change a communic- to change a communications department to an engagement team, you saw when we briefed our U-DIP, and I think Dr. Wise had barely been on the team just a couple of weeks, and not in the um executive director role that she's in right now, you see that we now have that expertise on staff, so we are building that out, the partnership between Dr. Wise and Ms. Osobedo is allowing major improvement strategy to come to life, and many of the members here that you see next to me were in our One Plan symposiums today. Some of our schools are at MIS two, some of them are not, some of them are still at MIS one, because there's just only so much bandwidth in a school at any one given time, and it will be of no surprise to anyone that the half a dozen, a dozen schools that don't have strong SAC representation or parent engagement are the schools that are still struggling to got out of MIS one. So thi- this is not any different than where do you have staffing challenges, where do you have behavior challenges, like this drumbeat repeats itself over and over in public education, and so as the board considers what to adopt next year in relationship for charges, make specific intentional design visits to those six to twelve schools to get to know those communities, because if you and a DAC member asks a parent to be a SAC representor, re- representative for that school, that's a great honor. If the principal asks, it's not the same thing, the principal might tell you, these are the six families that are fairly active, but the SAC is an extension of the, of the committees that are here, that work for you, they don't work for the principal, so when we ask the principal, why don't you have a SAC? Your principal says, I, I, I don't have a SAC, you have a SAC, so find a way that you all are thinking about how you engage, and the, the schools want to partner there, the schools are all better for that, but in my second year, I hear a lot of, why didn't the principal get a SAC? Why didn't the principal get a SAC? Principals are doing everything they can to meet those board goals, and they're all in on MIS two. They're not quite there yet, all of them, we will get there through the course of the year, we're excited for you to see that as we come out of the One Plans on Friday, and then as we present our U-DIP next year. Um I certainly heard in the report what I'll just call the pace of change, um I think Marion and I particularly this year mapped out the back half of the year to make sure that the things the DAC wants to see before they get to the board, that DAC gets to see before it gets to the board. But we moved very quickly, and we just talked about a board meeting schedule, that's two board meetings and two work sessions a month, our committees meet once a month. And so there will be times where the needs of the district will mean that I will be presenting at the non-action time period, and then in between non-action and action is when it gets to a committee, right, these are volunteers, they're putting their time and their effort in there, but the, the movement of the district can't be slowed because the pace of change is hard for us to manage across, uh, across that structure. I think we've worked through that, I think we have less fast-paced changes coming, as I think about the goals for next year, there'll still be change, but I think there are um larger shifts in, in um overall outcomes that will allow for more two-faced intersection, uh interface with, with our committees. But I appreciate the detail in the report.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the comprehensive feedback that you get, that you provided to the board, each one of you has a section up here, including the student representative at the very end, so I do appreciate her taking the time and uh articulating the message to the board, so please carry our feedback to her to, uh, appreciate her feedback and input in this. And then going back to what you asked for about representation, and Director Hayfley talked about this too, uh at the beginning of next year, uh each board member will have new school assignments, and maybe each of us can take that on us to engage with that respective community to generate what Superintendent Gollum was talking about, interest and participation at the DAC. Go and uh visit at least those open houses at the very beginning of the year, I'm talking to the board itself, um uh with your new school assignments, just make it a point. You can attend all o- open houses, but at least make it a point to attend your school assignment, uh open houses, and then engage with that community, and then request members from that community, even at that open house, to participate in the DAC and the SAC at that schools.
And then we can help with that, let us know, if we can come with you to answer questions or.
Yeah. Yeah, we, yeah, please do. Yeah.
And, and also like knowing which board member has what schools would, would be good, so that we can, we can partner there at any point
Yes, we. Yeah.
and look at the ones where Mr. Gollum was just saying, like, look at the ones where we know their parent engagement isn't as strong yet,
We need representation, yeah, yeah.
and how can we talk, come back to the change of mindset, how can we open uh and create a more inclusive culture? Where are we not, where are we still stuck in the old ways, and where can we get into the newer ways of this? Because it's not, there's no point in like trying the same thing over and over, because we're not getting anywhere, and it doesn't help if um we argue with each other that we're our state mandated committee and, and not, and this, uh, there's no, there's no point in these conversations. It's like, how can we move forward, how can we connect to this community, and if we don't call it a SAC and we call it a community meeting, maybe that makes all the difference in the world.
Yeah, great, and when that uh school allocations come out for the board members, I'll keep you involved, and then, so you are copied it on, uh, you have an idea what those are. Thank you again for being here and.
I, I wanna really appreciate Marion's last comment, uh, the name of a committee can go a really long way. Um all the language here is about accountability, and it's built upon that there's some natural distrust between the community and either the board or the administration, and so when I think about the plans that we're putting in place, we have facilitators, we have implementers, we have accelerators, everything is about getting better at what we do, and almost everybody here has the word accountability in a title, and I, and I think that might be off-putting to the community, and so maybe it's a, a community partnership, right, maybe it's the, the school, uh, you know, community team, I don't wanna overuse the word community, but when Velvet presents FS, SP?
FS CP.
CP, thank you, right, she's talking about community and a relationship, and when we call it school accountability committee, district accountability committee, and, and why do meetings run, run long, cuz my team's crossing every T and dotting every I, cuz they're not sharing ideas, they're, they're on their heels. They're on their heels, it's, sometimes it's a firing squad, and, and that's not the healthy relationship of if we wanna get MIS two right, how do we all lean in to get parents involved, instead of it being an extension of an accountability arm, we're, we're all ultimately accountable. You're elected, I'm hired, our schools have SPF's, people have cho- chosen out of the district for twenty years, like, there's accountability that undergirds everything that we do, so maybe we just shift the language, maybe we're gonna get more people that wanna be here, and it, we're, we're still gonna present, we want that, we want that feedback. Not like a free pass, but.
But some schools, some schools have different names, like second cup of coffee and all those kind of things, and you know, the things, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't give me a second cup of coffee at nine thirty.
And, and we do talk about, like, when we talk about, I feel like uh accountability has a lot to do with transparency, and that is a, is a conversation, and it's a collaboration, and approaching things with curiosity for its others' point of view. And I, I feel like that is more than this black and white accountability piece that is in the name, that's how do we fill this with life.
Okay, thank you guys, appreciate all the work and hope you guys have a wonderful summer too, and we look forward to seeing you in August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to learn.
And Director Hayfley, if you wanna reach out to me to talk about this more, what you just brought up, I'm happy to do so.
Thanks, Marion.
Thanks, well, thank you for being here late.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Is it late?
Okay, the last item on the agenda today is more uh in-depth discussion about the budget that Dr. Comfort presented at a higher level. Are there extra information that you're going to present, Dr. Comfort, at this time?
I don't have anything extra to present, obviously, the proposed budget was uploaded, um I'm happy to answer as many questions uh as needed, um obviously, big thanks to Laura Veronica and her team, they, they do all of the work to put that book together, so that's, that's a lot of work. If there's any super detailed specific question that I'm not able to answer, I will, I will get with Laura and we'll get that answered and, and response, and a response to the board uh as soon as possible. But um yeah, I, I assume this would be more of a Q and A if there's specific questions um to the, the proposed budget.
Okay, then I will open it up for board discussions, board, if you have any questions or feedback, I do appreciate again like what you said, all the work, the effort that went into building this budget, I know pressure Nelson was involved in this process, uh and appreciation goes, as I said, to Superintendent Gollum, to, to put the focus on uh directing our limited resources to closest to students in the classroom, and preserving as many of our staff positions at the school level, teachers especially coming out of that yes, funding cliff and declining enrollment, board questions, comments at the start. Can you finish this really quickly?
Well, the, the downside was there were about a, you know, hundred other things to focus on in the, in the agenda today, so you could spend two days and still not get to the budget, unfortunately, um.
Okay.
Very fair.
Thank you.
I don't sound like it's the first time we've discussed it though either, so I think that's.
It came as a PDDA, so.
That's the other, other.
But also if there are detailed questions, again, Director, I'm, I'm happy to, to provide a detailed response, uh even if they come via email, but.
Yeah, but yeah, it, it.
Centralize them and send them to me, and then I'll get them to the staff.
So to Parth and then to me, and then I'll get them to staff, and, and then we're happy to address them as we bring it to action
Yeah. Yeah.
next week at the front end of more information.
June twelfth.
June twelfth, thank you.
Yeah.
One, one question ahead, I know that we had some uh updates pending with the Kaiser Plan and the credits.
Okay.
Do we have an idea of how that all settled out, or?
Yep, so, uh.
Getting some credits, we were getting some other stuff based on claims.
Absolutely, so there will be a credit, uh it will, it will likely, there was some talk about that credit being upwards of eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh it's likely not going to be that high, so our overall budget for benefit increases is likely gonna be pretty consistent, we might see that draw down a little bit. Um but we're still, uh, we're still kind of in a, in a back and forth with them a little bit on, on what we, what we clearly expect to see with the credit at the end of the day.
Okay, so the overall positive news, close to a million.
Yeah.
It's great.
So one question I do have is um staffing, and we have realized some with the vacancies that we've had in the past, some additional funds, non-recurring essentially, with recurring money that we want to fill those positions. What is our current staffing rate, what do we, do we have a feel for that going into next year?
Uh we, why don't we talk a little bit about our hiring for next year, I mean, that's what you're asking, right, cuz we're, we're done for this year.
Essentially.
Uh Brandon, you wanna talk about the dashboard?
Yep, yep, so we, we have uh built a, an interactive dashboard for schools and executive cabinet and area superintendents to use. Um we used to, when we thought about hiring before, we kinda got a long Excel spreadsheet, and you know, it always had a hundred and eighty people on it or two hundred people on it, and that seemed very overwhelming. Uh and so this year, we've tried to be more strategic to say, well, all vacancies matter, we're also wanna focus on the vacancies that were, are most critical to us. So now, we can filter and sort by classroom teachers, what I can tell you is we're already under forty classroom teacher openings, to, as of today, we're at thirty-seven classroom teacher openings, um this time last year, we were up near sixty, now, there's some other positions that are a little higher, right? So I think right now, as of today, we had about a hundred and sixty uh vacancies across the entire system. Um but again, filtering down to then school-based and then uh specifically to classroom teachers, we, we, we are in much better shape than we were last year, um part of that is also, in, in all transparency, is the reduction of ghost positions, right? We had some posted positions last year, I'm not, this isn't an exaggeration, that were still posted from when Roy J. Watson was, Roy J. Watson wasn't, was still at high school. Um they have, they had stayed posted for, I don't know how long ago that was, eight years, ten years ago, um now how that happened, I don't know, we're, we're still digging into that. We'll continue to blame PeopleSoft in the meantime, um but so, but so, we've now, we've now cleared the roles of those, of those ghost positions, and so the data is accurate, the data is better. Uh again, our hiring and offer rate is still better, but we still have a long way to go, but what we're very excited about is that classroom teacher uh vacancy. Now, again, in all honesty, what didn't hurt us is that there were more teachers looking for jobs, because everybody was going through the Esser Cliff, and so um our hiring pools largely have been better for classroom teachers, uh I think we're seeing that across the board. Um and so we're, we're definitely better positioned um for the start of next year than I think we were at this time uh last year, but again, we're now monitoring that on a daily basis. It's interactive to the moment uh that shows exactly where, where we are as a system.
And, and so we review that, as I can, and the area supes are reviewing it daily with their HR leads, and the, 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 the focal point that's been given to the team was you gotta get to eighty-five to ninety percent of your core teachers filled, before you're gonna start telling me that you're almost there, like that's the focus. Um and so I think based upon, you know, market demand, it has been a little bit more of a, a, a rich or a buyer's market for us in teachers, I use Galileo as the example, I had shared that celebratory email that came from the principal. At this time last year, you know, there was no math department at the Galileo School of Math and Science, and now she has all her core teachers filled, and I think she's down to one, one A that she has to get filled, that I think she has a lead on. Now, it's also only the end of May, so there are still some, some set of teachers who might shop and make other decisions as the end of the summer and hiring period comes, comes, you know, focused, but we feel better, we certainly have a better system in place, cuz it's allowing for us to put the attention where it needs to be, and the early data, the early summer data, but the late spring data says we're in a much better position than we were before, and I can say that because I get principal interviews, and occasionally I'll get an AP interview, the quality, the quality is much, much higher, um particularly our internal candidates that are competing for leadership positions, they, they, it's not because they know the D eleven way, it's not our words on best first instruction, they just know instruction, cuz we've been focusing on it, and I, and I know that every once in a while, you know, the wrestling coach ends up the, you know, fifty-year principal at a large high school, and they're, and they were awesome, that's great. But we're hiring instructional leaders inside our buildings, and it's having incredible downstream impact on what is the expectation for any of those interviews, and I know it's happening at the school level as well. Darren, has a area soup anything to add from the west side?
No, I mean, we, we've talked about this, um what, what we've been exposed to uh in, in the last couple of years with curriculum and instruction and um the, the depth of knowledge that leaders have on um teaching and learning, it's just, we're just in a different place than we've been in years past, so this has been very good.
Cool.
I'll just give some highlights, cuz I have spent a lot of time reviewing the budget, and we as a team have reviewed it quite extensively, as was already pointed out, so don't feel bad if you don't have questions, cuz I think we have covered quite a bit of it, but like page seven of eighty-eight in that massive document, I think just really highlights how in previous years, we've always been funded for more kids than we actually have in the district, and this is the first year we're really looking at being funded for the amount of kids that we actually have, and so that's a big change for the district. Um another thing that you might notice, just really high level, is there's gonna look like a drastic increase in the amount of budget money, but that's due to the COP funds coming in, so if you compared it last year, it looks like we have over a hundred million. So if you compare to last year, it looks like we have over a hundred million dollars more and you're thinking, why is that? But it's because of that COP money. And then um in previous years or last year, we anticipated pre-K and intentionally drove money towards supporting more preschool classrooms out of the general fund. Correct me if I'm remembering wrong. But now it's looking as though preschool will be funding themselves and so we're not going to have to supplement there. Um, so those are just some of the really high-level takeaways that come to my mind. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out.
Cool. Yeah, in that budget book, I've always found, I don't know what page number is it, this is uh at the bottom of the page fifteen to eighteen, I think it's all like color categorized with yellow and green and blue. That shows the change, increase or decrease in revenue, what's being added or what's being removed from previous year to the next year. I've found that to be very useful and um uh if I will look at it li- little bit more carefully and um yeah, I think Melissa's pulling that document up. If I have any questions, just like the rest of the board, we'll reach out to you on that um.
You know, the the bill itself has just been.
That's the document that I'm talking about where it's all highlighted, the up there, increased, decreased in revenues uh and highlighted in yellow and.
As our committee chairs were leaving, the the word transparency came up. The budget build has been ongoing for over six months. Uh, it is so much um more stable than it was last year. Last year, the day before the SFA dropped, we were told there'd be a ten million dollar cut, then there wasn't a cut. And I just felt like the whole process last year was just, it 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 wasn't codified. What we have now is a process and we have, we have simple one-pagers to talk about it. We have seventy-six page documents to talk about it. And so I think um, you know, from what my expectations are as a superintendent of what we've delivered to the board, this has exceeded it. And I think the next level for next year is how do we build a budget in a way where we're really getting towards this school-based budgeting model that actually the community is in the budget build itself. So right now, the community opines on the budget build and we've had numerous touchpoints for that to happen. But how do schools build budgets with SACs in a way that that's being presented to the board that says this is reflective of what our school community needs with the dollars that are made available to them. I say that's it. That next iteration, might not be next year, it might be a couple of years, but this idea that we're actually having, you know, four or or even more different town halls that aren't really town halls. Their budget experiences for community members in their high school cluster. Right? That's a way where everybody feels that they're invested. Cause a lot of times at this point, you just get somebody who didn't get what they wanted or who wants to challenge a a line item in there. Instead of all the people who are like, yeah, that that looks pretty good. But I couldn't be happier, particularly how quickly we've made this change.
Do you anticipate any changes between now and June twelfth?
No.
Okay. Good to know, thank you.
Do you anticipate?
I was gonna say, they're giving us a face like, you've gotta change.
No, I just heard that things were changing up to the last minute, so I was curious if there was still be change. Uh, that that's all I've heard, you know, that it was dynamic, that things had to be adapted.
That is, that is very true. So uh I think sometimes we think that Laura did this like four months ago. Um, and it's been sitting there. She was, I mean, up until when we posted on Friday, up until Wednesday. Uh, we were actively making sure this reflected the the most current thing. We had a conversation similar to that in in the MLO committee of of wanting the data to be as current as possible because unfortunately or fortunately, in a proposed budget, there's lots of estimates in there, right? And so how how clear and concise can we be on our estimates? Then requiring as little um mid-year adjustment as possible. That's my, that's one of my big goals next year. We've really relied on the mid-year for these big sweeping adjustments and that's okay. But like, again, I think there's missed opportunity there. And so my goal is that our mid-year budget, again, we're talking about the mid-year budget in August when we return, saying, here's the strategy for the mid-year budget. Instead of next January, hey, we have money, what do we wanna spend the money on? So I think we just move all of that process up. Um, it allows us to be even more strategic. So no, I do not anticipate any changes uh between now and um June twelfth. And then hopefully it stays just as consistent when when the budget's adopted.
And 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 to add on to that, and the changes that may occur are for accuracy purpose. So when 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 I hear you say, I heard there's a lot of changes for the community, the strategy is clear. We are all in on the major strategic initiatives of how we wanna deliver on the board priorities and the board goals. Now, getting that accounting exactly right might mean three more prints of what was posted last week. That's just to get the number right. It's not because we're we're adding lacrosse to a middle school, then we changed it and we turned it into a robot, a robotics team. Like, no, no, we know what we're doing and we know where we're going. And now we'll get the the pennies, down to the pennies to get that correct.
Cool. And it might, I was observing most of the MLO Oversight Committee meetings, so that might even be where that sense of the dynamic nature of.
Yeah, I thought that was a really healthy discussion and and I, again, I think, and I alluded to it a little bit, the D I S. The MLO Committee even came to the the sense of like, hey, we we actually want this to be cleaner now, even if that means we have to add money in mid-year versus overestimating and then saying like, oh, now we have extra money. Um, and so I thought that that was a really valuable conversation and it required us doing a plan amendment in the very last meeting of the year, um so that we can make sure that we were working with the the most detailed information that we possibly could. Um, so I I appreciate the comment.
I I mean, the power of the budget, I mean, just the smallest example, by by taking Brandon's approach of understanding what you wanna do with the dollar at the beginning of the year gives you the ability to execute against that. Just tonight that we um approved having the fees to our families. Like, let's talk, and that's, we're halfway there. Our goal next year is to find more efficiencies within our budget to say that if you wanna participate in visual performing arts and clubs and sports, that's free of charge. Like, that's the power of the budget. I don't know any other district in the county that says your after-school experience is part of your tax base. Everybody else is, well, you know, it's gonna cost us this, it's gonna cost us that. We have that. You all have that tonight. That's the power of a well-developed budget, cause that money does exist. Cause in some of those cases, it costs us more money to collect the money than the money we've actually collected, right? And so we're just shifting the entirety and it's not, and it's funny because we're talking here, you all are the fiduciary responsi- responsibility team for a budget on behalf of the taxpayers. My team presents that to you. Who I'm really talking to is the community. You pay taxes for your kids to have a public school experience. Not just X number of instructional hours. A public school experience is, on Monday, I'm playing golf in New Jersey. It's a day I'm taking it off with my high school team because in thirty-five years ago, you know, we always said we'd play together once a year and one of the guy runs a nonprofits for Homes for Heroes. And so we make that the year. None of us are good enough to play golf together. But every year we play golf together because that was an experience I got from high school. I probably don't use, and even though I talk math all the time, I probably won't use anything I got in calculus. But I carried through that, so we have that. You have that tonight, cause the power of the budget. And next year, we're gonna get that down to zero. Think about that when you're enrolling kids. Every family, after-school activities are for free.
Well, I mean, you're talking about after-school experience and this page, the line item six talks about removing gate receipts. And that that you can elaborate a little bit on that. We are not going to be charging.
Well, we're not removing gate receipts. We are giving gate receipts back to schools. Um, because, you know, typically when we charge gate receipts, the the general fund collects that money. But that doesn't, that doesn't incentivize the school to incentivize their fan base, right? So when we say, hey, now, Dordy, you get a bigger crowd at football games, you get to use that money. Um, hopefully that then that, you know, motivates Dordy and Dordy's fan base to come and show up. Um, and so, yeah, I think it's similar to why why would schools ever be incentivized for the district general fund to grow, right? I mean, that's just and it's like, what is it, a hundred thousand dollars or something? I mean, you know, like, that's just not something that that's gonna motivate them. But by a simple, and Chris Knoll was like, hey, I've asked this every year, why why can't we do this? And I'm like, well, we can. Like, clearly, we can make up a hundred thousand dollar difference in in the general fund, fund balance. I just told you, it's ninety-nine um million dollars. Uh, and so I think it's just a a great small example of of small wins that that the budget has the power to.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Uh, if you have any other questions on the budget itself, reach out to me and I'll direct it to Superintendent Gollum. And then collectively, they can put together all the answers and send it back to the board. Uh, you can also bring it up as your questions on June twelfth when it comes to the board. With that, seeing no further um questions. Um, and Sandra and Jill do, thank you for hanging in there. Um, we will officially adjourn the work session at nine forty-five P M. Okay?
Good night.
Good night.